...thirteenth, 2019. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. Glad you could all join us. Bear with us while we play with the agenda a little bit as far as the order of things. We're waiting for our town engineer Larry Graham to arrive, so we'll hold off on a couple of things, but we can certainly take care of a great deal of business before then. Please bear with us. You might want to read a book or something. Very interesting stuff.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Watts.
I move to approve the draft minutes for October ninth planning board meetings, the site in his packets, and on the agenda, subject to amendment.
Great, is there a second for that?
A second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes of October ninth, 2019. Anybody have a chance to take at these?
I have a question about line number ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, that would be on page three.
On page three, it looks like, it just looks like some words were dropped.
You lost some words?
We will need to form, this will be less rigorous.
Form what?
A subcommittee. We need to form a subcommittee. Can we change that, John?
Yes.
We will need to form a subcommittee. This process will be less rigorous. I don't claim that I know what I was saying, but it is me, so.
All right.
I'm close, anyway. I'm summarizing, paraphrasing me.
Yeah, you're just mentioning that it's subdivision rules and regulations as opposed to something.
Yeah. I did see one other thing. If we can flip back to, was that it?
That's it.
If we can go back to like line seventy-four there, where under planning board office it says inclusionary housing bylaw, that doesn't seem very clear to anyone that didn't, wasn't in the room. Maybe we could change that to inclusionary housing bylaw revisions. Maybe that'll make it a little bit clearer for anybody, you know.
Yeah.
Any archaeologists that dig this up, they'll want to thank us for that.
When we get out of it.
And if someone could just clarify for me, line eighty specifies that we agree that you, Joanne, and Paul Nelson are to be members of the subcommittee to create a draft bylaw. Who else was on that?
That was me.
And you.
Yeah.
So we need to add that Bob was on that.
And Tilly.
And we need to add that Tilly was on, right?
Yeah, she was there last night.
Okay. And other than that, I didn't see any, anything that needs changing. The other one's just you and me, kiddo, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, all alone, just us.
Me and you.
Just you and me and John. This is a song there. I'm tone deaf, so. Welcome, Larry. Glad you could make it.
Hi.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else? Anything for the minute? Anybody else? Joanne, did you see something?
Good, Tilly?
Good.
All in favor of approving the minutes of October ninth, 2019, as amended this evening? Say aye.
Aye.
Say nay if you don't like that idea. All in favor, motion carries five to zero, unanimous. There are no vouchers. John, how relevant is the correspondence? Anything we need to act upon?
I'll accept the motion to approve the correspondence as read.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Bob Watts, seconded by Joanne Lout to approve the correspondence as read. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Good, great. Moving right along, I think the best thing we can do at this point is to, why don't we go to the public hearing section of our agenda and ask the folks from fifty-one West Main Street to please come join us, if you'd be kind enough.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Oh, thank you for joining us this evening. If you could, I'll accept a motion at this point to reopen the continuation of fifty-one West Main Street. So moved by Tilly, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob.
Everybody.
Everybody's up here.
I'll give a second to that. All in favor of opening, reopening the continuation of the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Welcome again, if you'd be so kind as to state names for the record, et cetera, you know the drill.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Thad Berry, project engineer, John Dugger, the project architect, John Cole and Tony, the applicant, and you'd like me to open up with what I think we'd like to accomplish tonight, and hopefully it's the same as what you'd like to accomplish tonight.
We accomplish a lot.
I hope we do. We had a very productive meeting the last time, I think.
We certainly did. Hope we replicate that tonight and move this a little bit further along.
Right. The last time we were here, again, we had a great meeting in October, and we had not received Mr. Graham's comments in time for us to have our responses in for your review in time for that meeting.
I recall we didn't look at anything that you did anyway because click came in late and they missed the deadline. Everybody was a little bit behind there, but we're caught up now.
Right, I think we're all caught up now, and we have received Mr. Graham's comments of November fifth, dated November fifth, which I think is report number four, and I think what we'd like to do tonight, since of course we weren't able to respond and have comments in time for your deadline, is to just go through them with you. We have our project engineer here, Mr. Graham is here, and go through the comments and respond to them as we proceed forward.
Sounds ideal. Sounds ideal.
Good, perfect.
I had the opportunity to read some of the responses from Larry's comments, and it seems as though there's a little bit of, there are things we need to resolve, so.
Yeah, and hopefully we can do that.
Sure.
We do have written responses, but I think we do it verbally tonight because you don't like to get handouts at the time of the meeting, so we'll just.
That probably should have come in last week, but.
Which we couldn't have done in time.
How about this, Larry, if you're introducing everybody with Larry Graham, our technical review agent, Larry, you gave a pretty comprehensive report that I had a chance to delve into a little bit. Would you mind walking us through that and your comments? And by you walking us through it, the folks can.
Will respond.
Help us respond with responses?
Great.
That would be great.
Perfect.
If you wouldn't mind, Larry, thank you.
Sure, sure. The report you're referring to is November fourth, 2019, and it's the fourth review that I've done, and they weren't all as comprehensive as this. I think the first and this one were the more comprehensive reports. So there, it's a follow-up and a fourth report to the first one, which was June twenty-fifth, then September tenth, September thirteenth, and then November fourth. I'll just go right into the meat of each individual comment. I don't know if, does everybody have the letter?
It looks like this. A.
Yep.
So we'll go right into, under A, comment four. I just said that the board should be comfortable with the completeness of the submission relative to the architectural drawings and their compatibility with the civil drawings, because there are a little bit of differences between the two, and the board should understand what they're approving with respect to what the buildings are going to look like and size and the appearance, the elevations, windows, et cetera. A particular concern I mentioned in that comment is the elevation of the cellar floors, which is not on the civil drawings, it's not on the architectural drawings that I had, and the footing drains relative to high groundwater conditions, potential impact to the proposed stormwater infiltration system proximate to the proposed buildings, which is about fifteen feet away.
Larry, can I interrupt you with that? How do we resolve that? I mean, it sounds like we have different sets of drawings. Aren't showing them, or how can that be resolved?
Well, there's just a little, there's differences when you look at the rear elevations to the rear of the civil drawings, more in the rear than any other place. And I think that the board really, if you're satisfied with the architectural drawings, do, I think that's a point that the board usually takes an interest in. What are the buildings going to look like? What are the mass of the buildings, the architectural appointments and so forth? So I don't know how far you've gotten into that.
I'll be honest with you, Larry, from my perspective, when I look at the architectural drawings, I look at them almost as renderings. I don't really delve into the elevation of the cellar, et cetera, but my understanding is that the civil drawings are the ones that are controlling, because the civil drawings end up being the construction drawings, if I'm not mistaken.
The civil drawings are the planned view.
Right.
Obviously, and the architectural drawings I'm referring to is the renderings, as you say, you know, that's what they're going to, that's what the board expects them to build.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, let's resolve this.
First of all, I'd like to thank Larry for all his time putting into it and Thad, you know, responding back so quickly. If we could take one item at a time, like for instance, if we take that, what I call basement item, and we could have Thad respond to that and explain that, I think that would be perfect. And your definition of the renderings is one hundred percent right on. It's the civil thing that counts for us as well. The renderings are close. When you look at it when we're done, it's going to look like that, but in the rendering is the elevation, perfect, of course not. But that's why we rely on Thad and Larry for stuff like that.
Absolutely.
So Thad, could you address that basement situation?
Yeah, yeah, we put the basement elevations on. Typically, a standard foundation height is eight feet to footing.
Okay.
Seven point seven feet to the finished floor. So we put the elevations of the basement floors on the plans. The septic, I mean, the infiltration system meets stormwater guidelines as far as offset from the foundation, and the foundation floors are at or above seasonal high water table, and they will have sump pumps, all of them will have sump pumps.
Larry, is that resolve the issue, or?
That addresses the comment about putting the cellar floor elevations on.
Okay. And those are, let me get, just be clear, those are in here?
No, these are on the latest plans that we have in giving you. We just got these comments, I can't remember when.
These are our response to the comments, so they will be on a revised set that you will get.
Or a revised set, but they're on the ones I was looking at. Okay.
Right.
I understand. Yeah, the groundwater table, which Thad established by the soil test that we did back in September, I think, October.
Was that the test pits?
The test pits that we did. Established a water table at a little above seventy-nine, seventy-nine point two, and I believe that, I haven't seen the cellar floor elevations, but I expect a few of them are going to be right at seventy-nine. So you've got an infiltration system relatively close to, probably by scale, fifteen feet or so to the corners of those buildings, and, you know, they will have footing drains, they're going to have sump pumps, and I expect that when the groundwater table's high, there's going to be a lot of active sump pump going on. And the footing drains will probably come into, will have to be pumped as well, so that's the condition that I expect there.
Okay. Moving on to the next one?
Comment six, I said at an earlier meeting, you heard that any snow which couldn't be stored on the site would be removed, and that adequate snow removal would be covered in the association documents, and I just suggested, so you didn't forget it, that when you write the conditions of any approval action that you might take, that you'd be sure you put that in there, because I think that's important for your approval.
That's something John's ears, I saw, perked up, and he made a note there, and I'm sure it'll be in the conditions.
Comment seven is basically the same, but it deals with trash and recycle services that would be provided by a private contractor. Again, another bullet point for a condition of approval.
All over that, John?
Mm-hmm.
As usual. Thank you.
A comment on that, though, the dumpster area was moved from the last plan to, you can see it now at the end of the larger parking area, and there is no, I didn't see anything in my plans that referred to a fence. They do have some screening, eight arborides around the westerly end, but generally, the board looks for fencing detail, under fencing, you know, a gate or whatever in the front, and that was lacking from this latest set of plans.
Could you provide that for us?
Yeah, we show double gates and a fence around the concrete pad, and we'll make it six feet high PVC.
Yeah, if you could throw that in a detail, just so I can sort of see the appearance of what it's going to look like, that would be really good.
No problem.
I think you do, Thad, do you have a concrete pad on this?
Yes, concrete pad.
All right. Comment ten, they have stop signs and painted, painted, paint markings on the pavement. Residents only CE, I wonder, it's a minor point, I wonder if that shouldn't be residents? People that live there instead of people, people of where they live?
Just type O.
If the board thinks that's a good idea. Under B, under B, comment two, I just put in here, still contend that the two Egress lanes would, that one Egress lane would be sufficient as opposed to the two. The board's made their decision on that, but I wanted to get my last say in, if that's my last opportunity.
Be disappointed if you didn't try, Larry.
Comment three, the parking spaces on the easterly side of the retail, commercial, and restaurant building have been revised and now show seven versus six spaces. This was accomplished by moving the handicap spaces to the rear parking area, so when I looked at that rearrangement, several things jumped out at me. The ramp that leads from the no parking area between the two handicap spaces.
Talking about right there?
Yeah.
This whole area, right?
Yeah, that doesn't have the clear space, flat space, if you will, behind it that's required, so that needs to be revisited.
That's easily enough.
Yeah, the tactile pad goes right up against the pavement, and then there's, and then it actually, it actually does meet it. It is four feet of clearance, because the tactile pad goes right up against the pavement.
I'm not understanding the discrepancy here. What?
It meets the four-foot level area.
Okay, and Larry, did.
Well, the plans that I looked at don't, but you're saying you've revised it.
Oh, the revised, put it show that. Fantastic, moving on.
The northerlymost space of the seven has a potential for one or two vehicles. If you look at those two parking spaces, see the seven, the seven in the front?
The front.
Yeah, and the furthest to the right, that's paint marking, so you've actually got the front of a car kind of facing into the side of the car, maybe two, and that's not a really good design. I mean, if you, if you can't help it, you can, but it's, it just is asking for somebody to pull in there and pull in too far and clip the side of the car that's parked in the seventh space. If that can be corrected by putting in some.
Actually, the pavement markings like that are pretty standard. You have an eighteen-foot deep parking space with a two-foot painted space between them, so it's, there's absolutely no issues as far as parking goes between a car parking there and a car parking in the other space.
So it's a concern, a potential concern for an accident, but.
Not an accident, but somebody that pulls in too far and pushes into the side of the car that's parked in the seventh space there.
And just keep in mind that the parking spaces.
Are, excuse me, one second. Are we, are we talking about something that could be resolved with curb stops?
You could make a shorter space there and have a stop by a raised island, a raised walk or something.
Mr. Chair, that's what I was actually going to comment on. We don't want to have that whatsoever. We don't want to make shorter spaces. Our spaces are designed to fit in a full car, including its bumper. We're not making shorter spaces where a car pulls in and there's not enough room so the bumper has to overhang.
These are, these are not compact.
These are not compact, so these are full spaces.
Twenty by nine or something? Twenty by eight? Twenty by nine?
Nine by eighteen.
They're nine by eighteen, and then we have the, we have the painted island, the painted space on top of that.
Nine by eighteen, okay.
So this is very, we're kind of, like, this is what we want in this particular case in Larry's comment. We feel that this is a good design, it's used all the time. If we were using smaller spaces, that'd be a different story.
Would it dehoove the overall development to have those as raised islands?
No, because then it becomes a trip hazard. Right now, the way it's done, you have parking spaces, and you also have, you've created almost like a little walkway. If you put curving there, that curving is going to take away from the walkway area. It's going to become smaller, or the only way to make it big enough is you're going to have to eat into the parking spaces.
And that was actually what I had suggested, that you go back to the six spaces there versus seven, and put an extension of the walk out there to divide the two spaces that I have made a comment about.
It sounds as though we're trying to maximize the number of spaces, and that's probably something that we need to address a little bit later, that we probably will. At this point, are all of those spaces one hundred percent necessary? Remember from a.
No, we have more than, we have, we have more than we need.
You have more than you need?
Yeah, we, you know, if you want to lose a space, you know, it's up, it's up to the board.
Do you think that would be beneficial, Larry, to do the redesign, as you said?
I mean, I hate to, I hate to cut out a space, because in, later in the report, I said that the board needs to understand that the number of parking spaces that you're going to approve on this plan is going to give you the formula for what, what the uses are in that building. And they, they have more than what they need based on the uses, the use of the building that they're projecting, and the bylaw that tells you how many spaces you have to have per seat or per square foot. So they have plenty of spaces to satisfy that. But then, that's it, because you can look at the site and see you're not going to put in one more space in there other than the one I had suggested later we'll talk about. So, you know, you've got X number of spaces, that's all you can park there for whatever the use is going to be that you're going to end up approving. So, I mean, I guess I'll go back, one space to rectify that would probably, if I was the designer, I'd probably go that way.
The other thing it helps with is plowing operations, to have painted islands rather than raised islands.
Absolutely.
Thank you, John, because we forgot to say that, that's one of the things we talked about.
That's why they have planners.
Thank you.
So it sounds like.
We just have to plug.
Yeah, CP plug. It's, how does the board feel? I mean, if you feel one way or the other, comments, thoughts?
If we have more than sufficient spots, you know, if we lose one spot, I feel more comfortable with it. Rather have quality than quantity, as long as we still have the minimum requirement.
No need for excess as far as parking lot is concerned, right? Okay, Bruce?
Yeah, I agree.
Tilly?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify what, what you said. What you said, we know that they're, so far, they're going to have the restaurant, the coffee place, I guess. We don't know whether the extension is going to be offices or what. There's no plan, so what you're saying is regardless, that's as many spaces they're going to have. Doesn't matter what they put up there.
It sounds like we're going to be dealing with that in a few minutes anyway, right?
Yeah, I, there's.
That's the subject. So right now, maybe we'd want to focus on this issue, whether we're dealing with one less spot or not, and potentially no raised islands, raised islands. What do you recommend, Larry? What is your recommendation, just so we're all clear?
Yeah, my recommendation would be not to have, not to have that conflict, whether somebody backs in with a trailer hitch on the back and punctures the side of somebody's car, or over, you know, over, overdrives and, you know, does it with the front end. I just don't like that arrangement, if it can be avoided.
You were suggesting extending this walkway.
Yeah, that, that would be one thing, because it would put the bumper stop where, we talked about it, where the car's pointing to the, pointing into the south, but, or the, yeah, south.
Why did they do, why did you do two different sizes? Because I've seen all of these are very large, and those closest to the street are smaller spaces.
I think they're the same.
They're all the same size.
You're looking at a few.
Oh.
Yeah, all the same size.
So they're all the same.
Yeah.
They're all, they're all eighteen by nine, that's right.
Mr. Chair, whatever the board would like us to do, if we want to lose, if the board wants us to lose a space, that would be fine. The only thing that we would ask is, we would really not want to put an island or extended sidewalk all the way up, because it's going to become a plowing nightmare. So if we want to lose a space, neither of what Larry's saying, we could do that. We think this design is the best one out of everything, so we leave it up to the board if they want us to lose a space. We're just asking if we're going to lose it if we could do it without putting a raised island or a sidewalk up.
With respect to what you said, I sort of get the plowing issue, but I'm looking at it and just imagining if there isn't a raised island there, folks that are getting out of the car and walking towards the building, not that they're exposed, but I see that, well, I can guess I can best describe it, if no one was parked here, no one was parked here, and people were walking this way, someone driving here might make that quick corner to get over there, and.
But the entrance lane is way to the right and has a raising to the.
Yes, the entrance lane is there, absolutely, that's the opening for the entrance lane, but this is just paint on the ground, pushing people, and now it would just be paint on the ground, and I see people making that quick cut, and I think the idea, from my perspective, just as one member of the board, I feel more comfortable with a raised island there, separating it, a landscaped island, I don't think you'll lose too much. Again, you will lose one, if I'm not mistaken. You'll lose, we've got that down on a single parking spot, where we have more than enough for the uses that you're describing. I don't think it would be a big problem. Is that easily resolved?
I mean, I do think the issue of plowing is.
Yeah, they'll have to backblade it. They will have to backblade it.
So we're all focused on losing that one spot. What if we lost a spot on the end there instead and pulled that painted thing in? Oh, yep, push that up, kind of solves the whole.
Yeah, makes it.
That's a sidewalk there, right? The beige?
Yeah.
So you're not going to really be able to pull in and hit a person's car and then make the plowing easy, you don't have to have the raised island.
Boy, I think that's what Larry's talking about, you know, as far as not being able to back in, when you're backing in, not being able to hit that other car. I think that's what he's talking about.
So losing that end spot on the right.
I like that.
Yeah, lose that one. But also makes it a little safer.
Yeah.
Okay, what do you think, Larry?
It's all right, I return to the other seven to six spaces, because if you gave up five feet of the one space, you could put another five feet in the front, which I think would be a little helpful with respect to that parking space, getting in and out of people exiting. See what I mean?
Center of those spaces.
Slide them, slide them to the, to the, I keep forgetting which way it's, slide them to the north, yeah.
To move it down that way.
Slide the seven space, delete one, and then slide the six spaces five feet to the north.
Right.
Put a five-foot either island or painted strip on the south end, on the north end.
Is that, I was going to ask Thad if that could be drawn into the plans, but.
We can do that, if you want to lose that space, and, I mean, I guess I need the direction of the board if you want, if you want the island or walkway, or if we can keep it flat.
Guys, simple, easy one. Island, no island. Paint or island? Paint?
I'm okay with that.
Paint?
I'm okay with that.
Paint?
I'm okay with that.
Sounds like we have three people. Paint, good, Tilly? Paint, it's paint.
So we'll do away with the space and.
Right.
We'll do it up that way.
And slide it a little bit to the north.
Slide it to the north.
So you get a five-foot painted strip and five more green.
Resolve?
Five more feet of green space in the front.
We resolve?
We'll be right back.
It makes it easier on that front side.
Hold on to that. Don't let anybody hit in the parking lot.
Mr. Chairman, our engineer had to leave, so we would like to continue and go through as much as we can, since we have Mr. Graham here, and we will make notes as best we can using what Thad has given us to go by. And we will make notes as best we can using what Thad has given us to go by and, and John. And we'll hopefully get through a lot of this and do as best we can. He had to leave. He has a, a conflict of some sort and had to leave a little earlier than I had anticipated that he would leave.
I think we should continue, Chairman.
I think we can get through a lot of this.
Larry has done a lot of work on this and, and we've spent a lot of time, Thad and I, together on this.
If you want to continue, if it's, it's your, I'm going to leave you.
You know, I think we-
We can continue.
If it's something that we can't handle, we'll just go to the next.
Then we'll, exactly.
Because it's not going to be finished up tonight, no matter what, so.
I think that's true.
Yeah.
So we'll get as, as much as we can. I mean, we can certainly, for example, the last issue that we've just been discussing.
We resolve.
We resolve.
In fact, every issue we discussed, we resolve.
Right. So let's, let's keep going.
But Larry, go ahead. Let's go to the next one.
Okay, number three. The, uh, a wider, I say a wider adjacent walk to those seven that are now going to be six spaces would be preferable, because that's your, that's your main walk coming from the parking area in the back, coming from West Main Street sidewalk. I think it would be a good, a good, uh, design to, to go from five feet to maybe six. I, I think in one of the original plans, it was even seven. It was wider. Because those people pulling in, I appreciate what John Collantoni said, that the spaces are 18 feet, so you don't, you don't have to pull up and have your tires contact the curb to stop you, but they'll do it anyway. Cars and longer trucks, they will do that. So your bumper overhang is going to reduce that five-foot walk to a three-foot walk. And you have a, a little snow or, or to contend with there. And I think a wider walk would be an asset to this, uh, site design.
Larry, could I ask you, you're referring to this side as well as the southern side, as well as the, um, what would be the?
Yes, all the way through.
All the way, the, the whole corner.
West Main Street to the rear parking lot.
So would be making all the parking spaces smaller?
No, no. Widen the walk.
How do you widen the walk?
Two feet to the west.
Getting rid of green?
Yep.
Narrowing up the, the landscape strip and the lawn strip?
Yes. And then, and I think, again, in, in one of your earlier-
By a foot?
Your first renditions, that was a wider walk.
Okay.
It was wider as it went into the main.
So we, you're, you're looking for widening the walk, uh, by reducing the landscape strip by a foot?
A, a foot would be, I think, you know, that would leave you a four-foot walk with a two-foot bumper overhang, which is about the max you'll ever have.
Does that work for you both?
Sure.
Sure.
Great. Good for, for the board, right?
So how, why is that landscaped now?
Good question.
Well, that's why we didn't want to go to the two feet, because over here, going a foot's no big deal, to the left. I don't have the exact measurement of, move the arrow to the right, further? Yeah, right in that area? You know, if we went two feet into that, I think we're going to lose it all together, and we definitely want to keep something there.
We're just talking about one foot.
Did we say we were going one?
One foot, that's why I'm saying that.
Right.
One foot.
One foot still leaves you with-
Something there, yeah.
Reasonable.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that.
And naturally, that's something that's usually a five-foot landscape, right up against the building, so. The board is caught in that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go public safety over plans.
All right. We'll lose a foot on the green.
Number four is, uh, the previous plans had a couple of lights in this primary entrance area. And the revised plan, I didn't see any lights.
Yeah, we didn't see any lights at all, because this is a photometric plan.
Right, so-
And we, we will need to see a photometric plan. Okay, folks? That's usually standard.
So the three lights that are out there, uh, one is over here. One is over here. And then one is over there. Those are the, those are the-
Excuse me, could, could we, um, jump over that until we see the photometric plan? Let's handle lights all one time. Okay? Make it easier, that way it's, uh, we get some subject getting. But right now, we don't have a photometric plan, so.
I mentioned the lighting again in general, in our report, so we can do it again.
Maybe we, when we, when we review the photometric plan, that would be the, probably the most comprehensive time to deal with lighting?
Well, I, I think you, you should deal with where the light should be now before they do the photometrics. Like, they haven't done one, so I haven't gotten one.
Okay, give me, give me guidance, you mean? Yeah. Okay? So I, I understand what you're saying.
I have something in here about lighting in general, so we can come back to that area with lighting.
Back to it?
Yeah, if you want to.
Excellent. Forgive me if I seem like I'm trying to move this along or-
We are.
Love it, love it.
That's good.
Yeah, don't move this along. Why'd you just drag this out for me?
Sure, let's all go with it.
Comment, uh, six, uh, is, uh, the, uh, the plans not been revised as previously recommended to show curbing, or at least I'm not reading them, to show curbing around the areas in front of each unit. Uh, the green area, the, the second parking space, and going into the garage.
It'll be all granite cobble.
So.
So what you want outlined will be outlined with all granite cobble, which will take care of the curbing and look absolutely beautiful, residential looking instead of commercial looking.
So the plans will be revised to, to clarify that, because the Dugger plans do show that, uh, as curved area.
Okay, but those are the architectural plans, the civil plans are what we're going by, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to square that out.
So is that, is that good, granite, granite cobble?
Uh, when you say granite cobble, are you talking about granite curbing?
No, I don't want the big commercial granite, literally, the granite cobbles.
So with cobblestones?
Cobblestones.
Raised, and you'll show a detail?
Yeah, it'll look really nice.
Okay, show a detail, sure, of course. Understood. Effectively doing the same thing as a curbing would do anyway.
Yeah.
Just done with cobblestones.
And, and so the whole site will be done that way, John?
The, I thought you were talking about, Larry, the, the residential areas in front of each residential unit?
Right.
You want, you want sort of the, I'm going to call it the landscaping area all curbed, so a car coming in to park, right?
Right, yeah, those lines.
Can't drive over the landscaping or hit someone. Yeah.
But the, the rest of the site then is going to be what kind of curbing?
Oh, when you're referring to this?
Yeah.
Now?
I think the plans refer to it as granite curbing.
Correct.
Not sure.
In that, we wouldn't be able to do the granite cobble. We'd have to use the, the granite.
Regular granite.
Yeah.
Standard. Sketch, seal.
I like the vertical. What do you like? I like the vertical.
There's a school of thought for both, but, uh, the slope?
The sloped, um, can I give a little history on that?
Only if it goes for the vertical, sir.
The advent of front-wheel-drive cars have made that sloped curbing completely inadequate. You've got all the torque in the engine going right up that little ramp. And I've seen a number of cars get launched into the buildings because somebody hit the wrong gear or hit the wrong pedal. And, uh, I just, I, I find it, and the insurance companies are finding it very unfriendly. Vertical granite curbing.
Love it.
Thumbs up, vertical granite curbing.
Much easier to pave, too, than the, and to holt the edge than the slope, so.
And, and the cur, the, uh, the cobble, cobble for around the residence.
Yep.
Good? Everybody? We do?
Um.
Good, moving on.
Okay, number eight. Comment eight, uh, the revised plans call for three parallel parking spaces along West Main Street. I see a, a issue with the site distance of the exiting car looking west if he wants to make a left turn. So I'm recommending that that be reduced from three to probably one and to crowd it as far to the west as possible.
Help me out here, everybody. I've seen a number of plans, and I don't know what the revised plans look like, but I'm proposing that they look pretty similar to this. For most of the revisions of the plans that we've seen, um, it really sort of fell off. It got very grayed out, and I really couldn't tell what was there, what is there currently versus what's proposed.
You can kind of see it, there's-
Am I seeing it in gray there, John? Maybe we could zoom in on that section there a little bit, if you could? Help me out here. So, right now-
You got that one space in front of the exit entrance.
Yeah. Whoa, a little too far. Okay, there we go, we're getting there. So that grayed out area there-
This area here?
No, no, it's to the left, on the street. We're talking about the, the parking spots on the street.
Okay, yeah.
That light, yeah, that area that, that's an existing spot now. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's going to be disappearing.
Right. So the first spot is this one right here with the bold lines.
Okay, but does that exist now?
No, that's proposed.
And there is no spot there that someone could park?
Because we have curb cuts now.
Right now, there's, there's three curb cuts. I believe, and it might be someone here that could help us, because that'd be a bad witness.
This, you can drive in this right here. This is the existing building right here.
No, but I think there's two parking spaces on, on the street. Yeah. There's, there's two parking spaces on the street, and we were trying to keep that so none were lost. And the way that we're doing it is, one of the curb cuts, as you know, is going away, because we're creating one curb, one curb cut opening with the three lanes. So that's how we were doing that. To answer Larry's comment, our, our answer to that was, we have no objection, whatever the board wants us to do. You want to go to one parking space there, two parking spaces, three parking spaces, whatever the board wants. We were just trying to keep it so nothing was lost.
Understood, understood.
And we were actually gaining one.
Yeah, we actually-
Showing three, we were one more.
We actually were gaining one.
Oh, okay.
One more than what's there now. There's now two.
One more on the street than-
Than what was there now.
And Larry, what you're saying is that additional one may have, uh, the, um, may have the effect of, uh-
It reduces your site distance for the exiting car-
To go left.
Looking west to turn left into eastbound traffic.
Okay, so how do we resolve that?
By eliminating, I, I would, it's, it's best if you eliminate two and push the westerly one as far west as you can.
That's fine with us.
Is that, is that acceptable to you?
Whatever the board wants.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So you're talking about eliminating this spot right here?
I'm, I'm talking about eliminate-
Two of them.
How can you avoid the trucks if it's parking there? Because if a truck parks there, whether you have one or two or three, it's going to block your sight.
The police give them a ticket.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not something that you can draw in this plan and, and keep from happening, or not draw in the plan and keep from happening.
But you do what you can to prevent it.
Actually doing what we're doing, if we go down to-
The one space.
The one space, right, Larry? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
If we go down to one space, you're going to have more viewing than you ever have in years there.
One space furthest to the-
Furthest to the west.
Yep, that's fine.
Everybody good with that? Are we going to steal the ramifications of that? That's something natural that falls a little bit out of our, our, uh-
Okay.
Valley West, that's probably something that-
So what is it going to be, one or two?
Uh, it sounds like the one, the board is, is in favor of the one, for instance, to the west. And, um, we, um, we, I guess we hope that the selectmen are in agreement with that in the interest of, uh, public safety and site view.
Do they have to approve that?
They do the street, we do inside. But I, I think they'll be amenable to it.
Well, if they're losing one and, and you're putting one back.
I, I'm hoping they'll be amenable to it.
Yeah.
The, the relocation, so to speak. Yep.
Uh, comment nine is, uh, I, I see the, uh, the ability perhaps to get another space where we have seven spaces for the residential overflow or guest parking, whatever you want to call it, where, you see where it says 8420, or 8920, I guess it is. In red, in that corner.
8420 over there?
8920, I think it is.
Talking about kicking that over?
Yeah, just add another space in there, uh, from seven to eight. I know there's seven units, so that's one for each space, but it doesn't hurt to have one more if you've got the place to do it. And that seems like there is a fine place to do that there. And, uh, one more space for, for a partygoer or something in the, uh, in the residential unit, I think is, uh, something to be considered.
Mr. Chair, so Thad and I have gone over this a number of times, even before this comment, because obviously, we'd like to create as many residential spaces, for lack of better terms, as possible. And, and as much as it seems like you could do that, we're 100% against it, because it's going to create a fire truck access problem. And doing the CAD computer of the fire truck, the largest truck that the Georgetown Fire Department has, this works much better the way the layout is, without adding another space there. So because we're not asking for any waivers on parking spaces on the residential units, uh, we actually have more than what, what we need. We, we would really like to keep this design the same, especially when we've done away with the fire access emergency capability on the, on this other side.
Larry, uh, is, is this on the wish list, or is this on the, uh, it's a really good idea?
I think it's a good idea, and I don't see how, uh, this is going to interfere with, uh, truck turning, unless they're riding up over the curb. Maybe, maybe John and I are not on the same page here with that.
Yeah.
Right, right there where the arrow is.
My only concern, looking at it, and, you know, from the 5,000 square foot view, uh, feet, foot view, is, um, when you take, what would that be, that nine feet of green away? And I'll be honest with you, I haven't carefully looked at the, um, the revised landscape plan. I've always been of the idea that, um, the more heavily you could take that green island and plant it with trees, the better your visual buffer to these units from the street when one's looking in that direction. And I know everything drops down, so I was, um, I was of the mind that that, that buffer would be intensively planted to present a, um, a visual barricade from West Main Street when looking in that direction, so that you don't see so many, um, so much of the townhouses.
So just to sort of answer Larry's question on the fire truck situation, you can control a curb and you can control green space. You can't control if you have another parking space there and a car doesn't park properly and maybe doesn't pull all the way up in the space and go down. I, I go back to Larry's example on the commercial spaces, even though they're big enough to fit a full car with their bumper, that people still, I guess, pull further up and, and have the bumper over the side.
I know people that have trucks that are longer than 18-foot when you, when you have the- There's still some people who think that bumpers are bumpers and not just bumper covers.
So, so we would, you know, with, we request that the board would really like to keep it with that, with not another space.
I don't have an issue with that. You good with it? Keeping it? Keeping it? Keeping it? Done. Moving on.
Tagging on then to your landscape plan, Harry. You should probably take a look, because there is nothing proposed along there.
Maybe we can, maybe we can visit that, I-
So if, if you want to tag that on, right?
Harry's going to add a couple of trees.
Well, yeah. I started heavily landscaped, and there's nothing there but grass now, so. I thought I'd call that to your attention.
It makes it easy for the-
Yeah, and we may as well, we may as well talk about that a little bit now, Mr. Chair, if we may.
No, we'll talk about this a little bit later. After Larry goes through, if he can be spoken about.
You got it.
You have the Harry, first you get Larry, then you get Harry. And, um, uh, landscape, so.
No additional space there. Okay. And then I went through just sort of a final, and I think that, uh, in summary, what you'll end up with is, um, you'd have 18 spaces in the rear lot. Six, the seven would be reduced to six. And one on, uh, West Main Street would be 25 spaces for the commercial residential restaurant. And for the, um, residential, then, you have 14 plus the seven are 21. So that's your summary of spaces, if, if you do what we've talked about.
Okay.
Total of 46 total.
Any concerns about that, Larry?
No, um, just, just that-
At this point, we're really not clarified on what the uses are.
How you marry the use with the, with the parking.
Absolutely, absolutely, you do. My understanding is that they're, e- even now, they're more than adequate.
Yes.
for any potential uses that you may want to incorporate in that, in that building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
By the book.
By the book.
By the book.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying.
When you say any potential uses, I say no. I mean, you could...
Okay.
I have one question. Can medical offices be in there? Because you need a lot of spots for medical offices. I work in a building in stone and we don't have enough spots.
Right. Well, what we're going to have to do when a use is identified, whether it's the initial use or whether 10 years from now, a lease is up and another use comes in, whenever we put a use into the building, we have to justify with the building inspector that we have adequate parking spaces for the use that's proposed before he is going to allow occupancy for that particular use.
Doesn't a use change trigger a site plan approval?
Yes.
It's a special permit. It depends on what they're going to put there.
Right.
What they want to put there.
So any use change would trigger a site plan approval, which would trigger review by the board?
And the building inspector would make that determination as to what triggers a site plan review. But in the general course, if it doesn't trigger site plan review, for example, he has to be satisfied that we meet the parking requirement for whatever use combination happens to go in there before he's going to... Yeah, before he's going to issue. Because he doesn't look at one space independently, he's got to look at the total.
One use, he doesn't look at the single use.
Correct, so he's got to do the aggregate of parking requirements.
So I think Larry's concern is very legit, but I think it's built in, protected the way the system is. You know, we can't all of a sudden say, hey, we're doing a 300-person nightclub here, and, you know...
It has to be $299.
Exactly.
Larry, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Are we good with that?
Yeah.
Great, great. Let's move on.
Understate pedestrian access, comment two. They call for a six-foot half privacy fence along the westerly property line there.
Oh my gosh, you're talking about something that's on my list. We just said...
And there's no specifics of style or material on that fence.
Help me out here, and I know we're dealing with the revised plan that this may or may not agree with. What I was trying to see, and maybe this isn't the greatest plan to use, but there's a wall somewhere along that northern side. There's a wall there somewhere, and then on the top of that wall, there's a fence. And Larry's right, we saw no detail of the fence. Don't really know how big it is, we don't really know what it looks like.
The wall is a lot less apparent than it was before. The wall is actually showing us from here.
Is it shown?
That's all the wall.
That's the wall, okay.
But your fence is up here.
The fence is on the other side of the wall?
Yes.
Okay, and how far out does that fence actually go? Where does it start? Where does it end? Does it end right up in the street?
So the last panel or two, depending on the dimensions needed, would be slanting down? So that's how we were originally going to taper it. So even walking, there's viewing there, even though that's not going to be, you know, a driveway anymore. So that's how we're going to do that, so it would go right to the end. And then we're bringing it all the way down, and at the end of the last meeting, when we met with the neighbors outside, the gentleman that lives sort of parallel to Unit 1 townhouse?
Oh, further over?
No.
If you went straight across from Unit 1.
From Unit 1.
Isn't that all one lot back there? Am I wrong? John, can you pull down a little bit?
You're talking prospects, right?
Yeah, you want to go down?
Prospect.
Prospect, okay.
Are we at the top of the plan there? Pull it up, I'm sorry. A little further, if you go a little further. Is that the only house? Isn't that all one big lot?
This is the next lot line down here.
Right.
There's some back, you have the lot from the West Main Street that goes pretty far back. Then you have a lot, then you have a lot that's the backyard of Prospect.
Prospect, okay.
Okay, so we have no problem, that neighbor had talked to us, about carrying that fence down along the property line to the, you know, right beside the townhouse?
Okay.
On the property line, so there'd be some privacy there.
Gotcha.
We have no problem with that.
My concern at this point is, on the other side, so in other words, and you'll show this revised on the latest, the newest addition, revision of the plan, my big concern is how far out on West Main Street it goes? And is, are the crooknicks the abutter here? Folks, do you have any input as far as how far out that fence should go? Because you're, let's put it this way, we're all going to have to look at it when we drive by and everything, but you folks are going to have to literally live with it.
I have to see a rendering to really get an idea. I mean, you know, our fence today runs along the sidewalk, right up to the property line.
This may help a little bit.
Okay.
This is kind of have the idea that, you know, there's talk about doing the plantings and then also having the fence. So we didn't think it would be right or look right or be fair to try to go beyond the existing fence.
Right, right.
So we were going to go to that, so it'd create the, you know, the privacy, so no one could walk in between. We thought that this still slanted would be good. I just want to share this with...
Absolutely, by all means, show the, show the abutter, please, if you would be so kind, John.
We're trying to show where it would go to your fence and not be towering over it and not going beyond it.
Going to get back to the some Pope, I'm still stuck at that.
Get agreement on it now, so we're all on the same page. No surprises.
We could have ended this a lot earlier.
Nobody likes surprises. What's your opinion of that, sir?
Well, it would have to, I mean, the picture's not to scale. Or it's not, the way the fence is shown, it's actually encroaching into our property based on the drawing, so, you know, the whole fence would have to shift to the right.
Is the rendering not somewhat skewed? I understand it's not a civil drawing, it's a rendering.
So is the question whether we want the fence to go to our front lot line? Is that what the question is, and how far back we want it to start from the front lot line? Is that where, because really, we can't extend the fence beyond our front lot line.
Of course not.
So that's going to be our stopping point. So is the question, we should start it?
Retract it a little bit, pull it back a little bit, and I just wanted to have the benefit of the...
We'll do whatever the board would like.
They have such a nice house that I'd like to see the front, both ways.
Then we'll start the fence a little further back.
So if, you know, I would say put the fence back further from West Main so that you can see their house.
I would suggest putting the end of the fence in line with the front porch.
With the front porch, that's interesting, yeah.
Because that gives you a nice view angle for the house.
So if we're going to...
Can we clarify on that? I'm sorry, what's your suggestion?
Down, starting at that point?
Would terminate the fence in line with the front porch and have it taper up at least one section of fence that's eight feet.
That's not eight feet.
It's not eight feet.
A six-foot fence the whole way? That last panel he's talking about would taper down.
Talk about sections.
Sections.
Oh, sections, okay.
So you start with one tapered panel, the end of which would be in line with the porch, and then it goes all the way back from there. And that way, as you're driving up, the fence will kind of fall into the ground as you see the house looming up behind it, which I think would make a nicer approach.
Sounds good.
All right, let's do that.
How does the neighbor like it? Should I look at the drawing again?
And keep in mind, that drawing is not what we're talking about here now.
So when he's looking at the drawing, here's my question now. We have no problem with that. So that means we're not going to do any plantings from our corner lot line to where that fence begins, because that would take away from exactly what you're trying to do to show his house.
That's it. You got it.
You may need to eliminate a tree.
Yep, and eliminate that one tree.
That's what it's looking like to me. But to keep it open, it might be, it might be preferable. Folks, just for, sir, Mr. Rupert? How do you feel? We're trying to get your opinion. You're probably the most affected by this fence, this project of most people in the town. I just want you to feel free to share your opinions on this.
On the fence. So I mean, I'm sharing my opinions for this project. I think we just talked, and I think having it, what was just described is acceptable, so...
Pull back?
It would be... This isn't too technical. Our fence here, and then, you know, the wooden fence would be...
Way back, and it would almost...
In this view here, the fence goes down to the street. I'm talking about cutting it back here.
Yeah.
So maybe on this one.
You'd have about a 10-foot gap between the two fences.
So this is the part, this is our line here? And then having this start in our end, you know, somewhere...
Further back.
Is that what you asked, that's what you were saying?
No chain link.
Oh, we're going to show, we're going to show detail.
Our answer to Larry's question is, we're going to do a six-foot white PVC, and we would continue that all the way down, like I said, as far as the board wants us to past that townhouse, because the neighbor had asked that as well.
It sounds to me like I'm going to deal with that.
Can you do what they had for, at least the front? The same kind of a fence like they have? It's a black one, isn't it? Is it?
Black iron, yeah?
I don't think that would really be appropriately, because what the ZBA has asked us to do with the fencing along that line is to create a visual barrier. And wrought iron fences, while incredibly attractive, it doesn't give you any visual barrier.
I think we have a privacy, a privacy fence there. But you said white PVC, or is that...
Yes, six-foot white PVC with the caps.
Full panel.
Full panel.
No gaps.
Right.
So you have, you won't have to look at it.
That's not in keeping with the character.
That won't be very attractive.
PVC, no.
Especially in the, you're showing a wood fence, or it looks like a...
We use it in million-dollar homes, we use it in, you know...
What we're showing is the PVC.
Yeah, but we got a historical, two historical...
No, no, I understand that, but I wouldn't use it if I thought it was going to take away from what we're trying to do here in the visual. We also have to be concerned, it's going to be, in my terms, swamped over the years with beautiful bushes and trees that are going to be against it. So when you go to a wood product, I don't care if it's pressure-treated, seeded, whatever, you're going to run into issues. So I'm also trying to think of the future of what's going to be there. They want privacy, they want green there. I'm sure we don't have to, want to have to worry about upkeep constantly two, three years down the road. So I'm trying to have a win across the board.
Well, I'm thinking about 20 years.
And that's why the PVC is the way to go.
Yes.
It cracks, you know, anybody...
No, the technology is different. It's...
It lasts.
It's heavy, it lasts.
Depends on what quality PVC fence you put in.
Yeah.
Different qualities.
You know what, wood.
Is there a grade specification to PVC fencing? When I say grade, I mean gauge, I mean, should be in gauge, sorry.
Where's the historical discipline we wanted?
Thicker is better.
The heavier the gauge, the...
Yeah, the thicker is better, more resilient, holds up better. I don't know if there is something like that.
Well, you asked for a detail and a spec on it.
Okay, so we're going to get a detail and a spec, and we're going to get a revised plan that shows it pulled back from where it is and extended further into the back of the property, or how we look at it?
Just some advice to the board, do you want us to just go to the back of the townhouse? Would that be a good point to...
If you've previously spoken to the individual that had a desire for that, I'm in favor of it. Is that individual here, by any chance? Oh, sir, state your name for the record, sir.
Peter Angelopoulos, 11 Prospect Street.
Hi, sir, welcome. Is, basically, we're touching upon something that you'd like to see?
Yes, right to where my corner of the property is, yes.
Absolutely, I think the board would agree with that.
Because I'm right, I'm 25 feet off that corner.
All the way there.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So if we're down in the back, I can talk to the neighbor.
Peter, if we brought that fence all the way and sort of used the end of the townhouse as the spot, would that be good?
Yes.
And then, well, it's 25 more feet to my fence. Would you go right, just right to my property line, where the line is?
I'm really sorry, but I can't see what you're doing.
Yeah, right there, right there.
Do that bold property line, right there.
That's the property line.
We'd bring it down to there.
Just hit the property line.
Yeah, yeah, that's no problem.
It's about 20 feet.
Yeah, about 20 feet off the corner. And then, and then we talked about maybe a couple, put some trees there too? A couple of trees, because you're going to be taking down a couple of trees to do their landscaping. Right now, there's some really, Stu has some really nice big trees right there, but we know after it gets cut, the ground, they're going to...
Absolutely, I want you to ruin the roots and everything.
We're going to be moving a tree that we're showing up in the front by the fence. We'll move that to the back.
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
This is Georgetown, we don't kill trees, we just move them.
She was doing it.
I'm going to be digging those holes, you know I am.
See her with the bandana and a shovel in her hand?
Hey. I've done it.
We all have.
One more suggestion on this. Out front at the sidewalk. We're talking about eliminating fence from the line of the front porch out to the corner, which leaves an opening. Probably not what was the intention of the ZBA or whoever said privacy, et cetera. Why not return your wrought iron fence? Return it before you start your six-foot PVC.
That makes sense.
Good idea, Larry.
And Larry, over here.
Understand, John, whatever.
Oh, this has got to edge you.
No, I completely understand, and I, I mean, where...
This way.
Gotcha.
It just, it just, no disrespect, where does it end? We just almost, you know, we're trying to do everything possible.
Next item.
It still leaves it open, but it closes the properties. And I think that's what you probably might want to do.
Something that you may want to consider, just something that makes it...
Is it already fast, the neighbor?
By all means, let's see.
Do you want us to match the wrought iron, wrought iron and curving?
Yeah, I think it's a great suggestion, it's one panel.
Just making the 90.
Forty bucks probably wouldn't put you out too bad.
90, making the 90? Are you good with that, John?
Absolutely.
Moving on.
Go where you go.
Good smile.
Keep going.
Moving on.
Number two. They're calling for 13 now 12 Leyland Cypress trees along...
Oh, 13.
Well, not along the walk, there will only be 12 along the walk. One's going back in the back. And that space is somewhere between 15 and 25 in the narrowest place. So you've got a fence on your property line a foot or so, you've got these fairly, you know, large diameter in full growth Cypress trees. Then you've got a four-foot walk. And even the rendering, which I'm glad to see emphasizes my point, is that that's going to be sort of a dark tunnel down through there. So I think a different type of landscape, you've got a fence for the visual buffer. I think these trees probably are the wrong selection. It's going to get dark. Take a look at the rendering. You know, it's...
So with the light of the commercial building? And we have a light at the beginning down this end, which is going to light up that whole end? I don't think it's going to be as dark as everyone thinks. I mean, you're talking about, you know, a two-and-a-half-story commercial building that is, you know, lights up. I mean, even when it was, you know, in business, oh my God, over two years ago now, that's scary. You know, it lights that area up. We're also trying to be respectful. One of the concerns that was talked about at this board and by the neighbors is that they wanted privacy, they didn't want light coming over. So again, we're trying to...
It's a balancing act, and this is one of the reasons that maybe we could defer this conversation until we have that photometric plan, and that might be helpful.
I could make a suggestion as well, prior to getting to that point. The four trees that are at the top end of the parking area of the commercial space. There, I see how the tunnel effect could happen there. I'm thinking perhaps because we have, I have more concern about this time of year with the sun setting earlier, that if we went with deciduous trees there, that they wouldn't block out the light at night so much as if everything is evergreen.
Just so we're clear, are we talking about these four trees, these four trees?
The four, right there. It says six-inch ductile iron line. These two, these two and these two. So you have your buffer between the sidewalk and the neighbor. And you have something opening up on the other side that would have no leaves in the winter time when they really need the light there.
So, John, when they do the condominium plan, the maintenance of these trees will be listed?
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to be maintained.
Sounds like a reasonable solution to prevent that, as you said, Larry, the tunneling effect.
You're saying change the Cypress to deciduous?
Yeah, just those four.
These four would be changed?
Just those four, change them to deciduous trees? Just those four, change them to deciduous trees.
We change them to something else, not a white pine?
When you go through the dark time of year, there's no tunnel effect, because the leaves will be gone.
You're right with that, John?
John, you.
No, you said not the white pine, I was just thinking.
So we're talking deciduous trees like maple trees?
Maple, sycamore, oak.
So change those four to maple trees.
True, we change them to, um, whatever would be recommended by your landscape professional.
Native.
Native.
Whatever, whatever's recommended by the landscaping professionals.
Did you say, keep saying yes?
Okay, good. Next.
Yeah, you know, in, in this area, you're wet enough for birches, you really are. You get a river birch there, it would be beautiful, but your professionals will, will make the suggestion.
The last part of that comment is.
River birch is nice.
River birch.
Beautiful.
I like that.
Do well there.
Uh, the last part of that comment is, from the last plan to this one, uh, this, I think it, well, I don't know what it was referred to, but it looks like a landing in, in three or four treads on the westerly side of the front building. Yeah, right there.
Yeah, it's not an, it's not an entrance. I'll, I'll read our answer to it, just so I don't make any mistakes. Where are we?
Are you on, uh, comment two or three?
Two, the second paragraph.
Comment two, the walkway will be illuminated, additional lighting not required. Rear side exit is not for general use.
It's an emergency exit.
It's an emergency exit only.
It's pretty wide. It looks like it's going to be a major.
There's a reason for that, because we have to put our sprinter room and the elevator machine room at that, right in that area. So we have to be able to get the maintenance people up to those things, that's the steps.
Okay.
And the, the reason it's so long is because there are three, four, three doors right in line with each other, look at the architectural plan.
So it's not, it's not made to be some type of big entrance or anything like that?
So if it's not, then, you know.
Probably won't be used at all by the public, right?
No, we don't perceive it, no.
Good with that, Larry?
Yep.
Great. Number, number three, revised plan.
Do not show or propose to close off the existing curb cut at West Main, and right there, what we've been talking about, uh, that should be closed off, uh, in my opinion, uh, so it doesn't encourage somebody to keep walking right on out into the street. There's just no reason not to close it off that I can see.
So we actually talked about this at a previous meeting.
Okay.
And we talked about keeping that curb cut there, and we'd like to keep it there. That curb cut has been there forever, and as the neighbors have mentioned, though it's a curb cut there, that grass driveway has never been used, but that curb cut has remained. But the reason that we'd like to is if some crazy situation where a fire truck had to go in beside the building on that side, it would still have the capability. Doesn't have the capability to go all the way down, but if there is something going on in that building where they had to get on that side, they'd still at least have a prayer of that capability to, to do that. So the curb cut has been there forever with the sidewalk there, and now it's not going to even be a driveway entrance, it's going to be a, a walkway. So we would really like to, to, to keep it there. You know, the fire chief, um, how do I say nicely? I, I, I don't think he was the happiest that that emergency possibility was taken away. So I, when it comes to safety, as you said, Mr. Chair, earlier, like, I don't think it's a big deal to, to keep that curb cut.
To Larry's point, uh, someone idly walking in there, we could put tactile pads there that if someone were visually impaired, they'd know that they were coming to the street.
Does, um, does that, does that aid in HP accessibility from the street itself?
Does.
So is anybody that would get out of a vehicle?
Fire chief was here that night, right?
This is a.
We talked about leaving that curb.
You all right leaving it? You all right leaving it? Bob, leave it, Tilly, leave it?
Yeah.
Leave it. Next, next one, 45-foot-long retaining wall?
I like the tactile, uh, something that people can feel that they're.
Could you propose something?
We'll look into that, yep, we'll look into it on the, on the revised, maybe? Yep.
I want to add one more point, because I disagree with that, and, and obviously, we move that parking space as far north as we can. We're going to be having people stepping out of a car onto a sloped, or apron.
But why would we have to move it in front of that walkway area?
To, to, to extend the site distance as far as we can, as we previously discussed, for a car exiting looking to the west.
Can you zoom out a little bit?
I, I, yeah, and I think we talked about moving it as far as we can, but not necessarily to the lot line. So I think we're, I think what I was thinking is we're going to move it as far as we can, basically in the location of that third parking space where that's shown, which clears the, that curb cut.
Yeah, which is going to give a ton of, ton of visual.
I don't think that.
Yeah. Yeah.
You'll pick up another, probably 25 feet of site distance by moving it as far north, or west as you can.
Then you're right up against our property line, I wouldn't do that.
And then you should not have the, the sloped apron for somebody to step out on, on a slippery surface. There's no reason to let that apron stay there. Fire truck wants to get in there, they'll drive right up over the curb.
Well, we already determined it, let's, let's move on, all right, please. 45-foot-plus-long retaining wall, but is that?
Yeah, that's, uh, that little wall I pointed out, the length of it, it's been reduced quite a bit.
Okay, so.
It's been reduced because they don't have the grade situation that they had before. It's just a detail, but they've got the water line under the road.
We're moving that.
Excuse me, under the wall.
Oh, is that revised in the revised plan?
Yep.
I'll, I'll set, okay, great.
Uh, they call out where the privacy fence ends, they also say end a shade lock wall, that's just a thing that needs to be corrected on the plan, and then the fence is going to end another 20 feet further anyway.
That's done.
Okay, under D, traffic impact, no further comment.
Great.
Under utilities and lighting, uh, question again about the electric, water, and fire departments review and approval of the plans. Maybe the latest revised plans, uh, that I'm sure John will follow up on. Comment six was, uh, my recollection from a previous meeting, the board requested a lighting photometrics plan, which I did not see, and I identified only three lights shown on the plan. So I, I really think that what I'm seeing on the plan is, is probably underlit, and, and I think the board needs to see this photometrics plan, and maybe, maybe a separate overlay of, of just the lighting, because it is a busy plan, so you can see where they are. But I've, I've identified only three lights here, here, and here, in the front, and each side, and backside. I know there's going to be lights on the, on the residences, and perhaps some lighting on the commercial building, but you really need to see it all.
The photometric plan will describe everything, it'll be its own sheet, try to make it as unpolluted as possible. Sorry, couldn't help, couldn't help myself, I don't, my brain just works that way.
Yeah.
And, um, and naturally, the, the details of the lights, et cetera, the.
I do believe light pollution is a technical term.
It is, I know, and that's, I can't help myself.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question on the lighting situation? When we come back with the photometrics, we're, we're going to come back, unless this board tells us otherwise, with the three lamp posts, I'll use my terms, that, that are there, because there's going to be so much light from the seven residential units and the commercial building, and, and we'll show that. But I'm just asking the board, would you want us to have, with all the lighting that these buildings are going to provide, do you want more lamp posts with lighting? Like, again, I'm just worried about, I'll use the term light pollution, or disturbing the neighbors across the street, or beside with too much light.
Is, is the question you're asking, do we want the, the lamp posts?
Do you want more?
More lighting.
What's the technical word, I want more parking?
General lighting.
Lights in the parking lots, and on, on the landscape. And, and I think that would really be a mistake and take.
I'll be honest with you, not to cut you off, I, I have a little trouble answering the question if I want more or less right now, because I simply don't know how much is there. And the photometric plan will probably illuminate that a little bit.
And it.
Moving on, moving on.
The photometric plan should, should take into account the lighting on the building.
Absolutely, accounting on the lighting on the building, the lighting from the, from the street lamps, all the parking lot lighting, everything.
And just take into consideration when you're designing it, design it as you would, in the other sense, relative to providing enough illumination.
Absolutely.
Not too much.
Public safety, but.
There's going to be three meetings down the road.
Everything in moderation, right?
Now, I understand.
That Goldilocks lighting.
The lights, the poles themselves don't have to be hot, and having, they should be.
See, we can do it without him reading.
Everything, all the lights cast down.
That's right.
Moments are controlled going this way.
Yeah.
Nothing's going off the site.
Yeah, nothing escapes.
It shouldn't be high poles in the parking lot.
Correct, no, we don't, exactly.
In, in a facility like this, you don't need any poles, you can have lantern-type.
Yeah, that's.
Residential and attractive, yeah.
Make it look, thanks. Where, where are we, Larry?
Under F, drainage and grading, and I think we can do some of this, without that being here, perhaps these answers, we can go do more.
Do, do we want to defer that completely?
Well, it might be easier if we, if we move on, because that, that would be something that would probably be better if Thad is physically sitting here.
Can you, um.
Yeah.
Blow through it, Larry, very quickly, just to give us an idea of what's going on here?
Yeah, whether they want to answer or not, and I, I would like to know what.
So the board, I mean, this is.
Specifically what, what Thad's written comment, if he has one, is to one of my comments, if they care to share that.
Oh, you have the written responses there, no?
Yeah.
You have the, okay, so if you wouldn't mind reading them.
We will do that.
Thanks.
Okay, so comments one and three, uh, they went out and did the additional soil testing, some, uh, six additional tests, which I appreciate, established, uh, really two things. One, it established the water table previously mentioned at 79.2, and, and that's important because of the cellar elevations, for one. And it also established that the soils in this area behind the residences where the infiltration is proposed, and where the stormwater management system for mitigating peaks and flows, or peaks and volumes, is located, that it is, that the parent Hinckley soil is not there.
It's not Hinckley, yes.
It, it's fill, and it's loam, and it's a mix of, of a lot of materials.
Well, the board is going to be, um, they're going to find out that the soil mapping in the, in the community, that, uh, that's the basis of the TR series of stormwater calculations. The, the soil mapping was done a very, very long time ago by the, so long ago that it was called the soils conservation, and it was probably in the 50s, 60s, and.
It was not conservation.
It was a very, um, broad brush stroke of determining what the soils are.
A lot of it was done with photo telemetry.
Yeah, I'm just keeping this.
Photot telemetry. Yeah, so, I mean, it's notorious to be somewhat inaccurate, and Larry's good for pulling it up and noticing that, and, but the idea of using the Hinckley soil is something that Thad could have explained that, um, he's got to punch something into the, what was he using, CHF-40?
Yeah, yeah.
He's got to punch some coefficient in.
Well, and there's, there's a lot of calculations now in the stormwater management standards that tell you what type of soils you have, and that determines what you've got to have for infiltration volume, what you've got to, what you can depend on for infiltration out of your, uh, all the systems. And we don't have it here, so that's, that's my point. And there is a swath of, you know, down through the, uh, the stormwater management system behind these units, that I, uh, that sort of cries out to be replaced, all that fill and, and loam, all mixed soils in there, above a groundwater table that's about three, three to four feet down, really drives out to be replaced if this is going to be a site that's going to be dry and usable and not unsightly.
We have a note here if we've done.
John.
John, hang on.
We've, we've been working on this.
Okay.
But thank you. So comment one and three, Larry, and the first sentence, when I read this, I'll be going to the other, and you'll understand what I'm saying. See response to comment four above on the first page of the submittal. Regarding the thousand cubic yards of fill removal referenced in the review report, the existing fill on the site, and as found during the soil testing, is in fact a clean granular material suitable to support the stormwater system and does not need to be removed. We have outlined limits of fill to be removed in the area of the stormwater infiltration system. Other than the fill needed to be removed from general construction purposes and to the limits shown for the roof infiltration, there is absolutely no reason to remove any additional fill. Please also note, the metal restoration area will have material removed to create a planting base. The material excavated can also be reused on-site as general fill. The number four that I was referring to, as, as is required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections, M A D E P, stormwater regulations, all stormwater infiltration systems must be 10 feet from building foundations. The proposed infiltration system is a minimum of 10 feet from the proposed foundations. All basement floors will be above the recorded seasonal high water table, each unit will also have a, something. Just like we had talked about before. So one goes hand by hand.
Okay. Larry, um, essentially, if, to summarize here, you're saying that, if I'm getting it right, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the stormwater calculations, as this is all designed, only work with the correct soil. And you're proposing that, um, limited amounts of material need to be removed, which underlie this, and be replaced with different soils that can accept the groundwater?
Generally.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
And Thad is in disagreement that.
Thad's in disagreement, we're, we're in disagreement with that.
You're in, yeah, I can't.
There's certain things that are going to be replaced, obviously, here, as we mentioned, but not to the level that Larry is talking about in a thousand cubic yards of, of, of soil. There's, there's no need to that, because we're not, also, we're not keeping in mind that the metal restoration, which is now not accepting rainwater, now it's going to be all planted, so it's going to be accepted, all that has to be, and again, I'm not an engineer, all that has to be kept in, in the formula. So, um, Thad is pretty thorough on this, so, you know, it's not just a one-night thing or a one-month thing, this has been.
So we, we seem to have a, a disagreement here. Larry, have, have you heard or received Thad's?
No, no.
Response?
No.
Maybe, um, maybe it would be best if you could review that and find out, because I'll, I'll be honest with you, the metal restoration area, the area you're referring to here, we're talking about different areas here that need to be amended, removed, replaced, whatever, and I'm not seeing a plan that's showing where all this dirt's coming from, or where it's going, and what's being replaced, so maybe you could, um, revisit this?
I mean, I'll wait to hear his response, but I will refer you to the, to the soil logs, which he submitted, I think they came to the board.
I so tried to figure out where those test pits were.
Not, not where they are, but what they are.
Yeah, the modeling, I, I was looking at a lot of it.
The test pits are all in this area where we needed them.
Yeah, and, and some were further back, and I couldn't really discern it, it was too, too great out.
I'm, I'm talking about the last six that, that Thad did, that I witnessed.
Okay.
And they're generally along the, um, stormwater management systems, the two. And that's why we did them, so we could see what kind of soils we had beneath what was being proposed. And if you look at the soil evaluator forms, which he submitted to myself and the board, we're looking at three-and-a-half feet of fill and loam. 39 inches of fill and loam. 36 inches of fill and loam.
And Thad is saying that.
In our design, let me try to put it in my terms. If you have to design for a C to make this work, we've been conservative in design for an A. So our design is ultra-conservative to, to, to handle that. And Thad could go more technical with Larry on that. So we've already taken this into account.[1738.71]
Okay. So, in other words, what you're saying is the design will... It would work even if this was concrete underneath or something to that.
I can't... I can't use concrete, but...
But I get your drift. Again, this is something that I feel is best resolved by... It's a shame Thad isn't here. It's unfortunate. We're going to have to hold off on any kind of decision on this, I would guess, unless the board feels comfortable with just going with what Larry's saying.
Well, the only... The concern I have is the first one they just started with. I just don't feel comfortable approving anything that needs a sump pump. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. That doesn't fly with me at all. So if you can avoid or suggest something to correct that, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, and I like to give my answers direct and quick when I can. If we build these, they'll be built with sump pumps. Because it's the right thing to do. So, again, no disrespect at all, because some of your ideas are phenomenal, but they'll be built with sump pumps. If we can't put sump pumps in them, we're not building them. Because it's the right thing to do. And you can't stop a townhouse owner after the fact...
Installing one.
From installing one. So why don't we do it the right way as part of the design than having someone do it on their own?
But if the soils require...
Sump pumps has nothing to do with the soils.
It's the groundwater table.
Sump pumps has to do with the elevation of the basement. And as Thad's already explained when he was even here tonight, that those elevations of the basements are higher. So it's possible that the sump pumps might not even be used, or it's probably they might be used during the... Thank you. So, you know, it is what it is. I mean, I'm doing four townhouses in Ipswich right now. Sump pumps in every single one of them.
It just comes automatic.
There's a comment in that, Larry?
Does that satisfy everyone?
No, I'd like to... I'm just...
I think what the board is saying is you want me to sit down and try to resolve these issues with Thad, and I'll do my best to do so. And if I can, I'm going to come back and tell you I can't.
Great.
You ask anymore.
I'm good with that. I don't know if we can resolve the sump pump issue.
I'm not comfortable on that. You know, I want to be convinced because I've never... I've sat on here how long? Never approved anything with a sump pump. And nobody has ever even asked us to approve it.
There's a technical matter. This is getting off the sidetrack. There's a technical matter. When you have things like radon mitigation systems required by the state to be installed under a slab, which can crack, you need a way to get excess moisture out so that particular system can work. And it's all going on under your slab. It's kind of like when you turn on your car and a million things happen under the hood. Well, fillings are getting to be just as complicated.
I'm so glad that John just said that because I forgot all about that. So on the Ipswich project, and the townhouse is, you know, not similar look here, but size-wise. So in the basement, we put the... All around the basement. And now they allow you to do the radon in the sump pump connected to that same... I'm going to use piping around the basement. They just have to have a separate exit off of the slab. So that is a much better radon system if you ever had to have a radon system. Because as John mentioned, by code, we have to do that PVC four-inch through the roof of the building on each individual townhouse. So since we're going to do that, instead of just doing four feet each way under the slab, we do the complete circle around the outer slab, and now we have a separate exit for the sump pump. So if you ever need to use it, it's there to use. So it's going to be done with the radon system anyway. So it's ridiculous not to take that precaution in case it's ever needed.
Can I ask whether John or John have looked to see where your sump pumps are going to discharge to?
Yes, Thad usually... Thad actually did that, and I don't know if it's in the comments here.
I didn't see it here. We can have him address it.
Yeah, well, I'll have Thad put that in writing. But we talked about that.
Not that... Not that I want to cut this off, but we have been talking about an hour and a half here. We do a lot of other business tonight. We have a lot of applicants. Would it suffice to say that, Larry, we're talking under drainage and grading? Perhaps you could get together with Thad and come back to us?
Sure.
And that would be very helpful.
Can I ask one more?
Absolutely, go for it.
If we can hear his response to comment number four.
Number four.
Because we have... Essentially, his first response to me was, did not get close to answering the issue, so I'm interested in what his response is.
I can read you the response. Comment number four, the rear meadow area provides for the required stormwater infiltration requirements. The site design directs 100% of the stormwater to the rear meadow area. The BMPs discharged to the meadow area that will provide for additional infiltration complying with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management requirements. This does address the issue raised by the review engineer.
Are we talking about the roof drain there? Is that the roof drain, Larry?
He's saying that the required... The stormwater management standards requirement for exfiltration are accommodated by overflow from BMP-2 to the metal. That's not his exfiltration system. His exfiltration system is the first purple line behind the seven units. That's taking about 2,900 square feet of roof area, back roof area of the seven units. In my opinion, that doesn't meet the 65% requirement. 65... And I, in my first report, I said, "I'll be satisfied to take the difference between the impervious surfaces of the existing site and the impervious surfaces of the proposed site." The difference was about 12,000 square feet, I think. And he's infiltrating 2,900. When you do the formula, it needs to be about 8,200. Difference of 6,000 square feet that I feel needs to go into that exfiltration system, not an overflow to the metal or the pond.
Yeah, shouldn't just dump out untreated. It sounds to me like this is one other thing that...
This is a big thing to me.
This is a big thing. It's certainly important, and it's one other thing that Thad and you need to resolve offline.
Thad can completely answer that. I would be able to explain it correctly, but Thad and I have discussed this.
And when we come back, we'll come back, circle around back to that. But that's not going to get resolved tonight. And I think...
Appreciate you letting me have that one more.
Absolutely, Larry, absolutely. If there's anything else we need, at this point, I see that...
If I can just comment on the other items, the miscellaneous, just by saying that the response says...
Where are you? We move ahead?
This has been corrected on all of the miscellaneous items. I think those are all clear.
Under G.
Under G?
Yes.
Great.
So I think those were... There was no disagreement.
And those other ones that you see beyond that, eight, nine through 14?
Yep, all has been revised, has been corrected, notes added, whatever. So those are...
Excellent. So we're looking at drainage and grading. Only items that are still there. Back to... Now to Harry. The question of how well-planted that island is for buffer. When it comes back, I hope there's a visual buffer.
So I just... So I can prepare you, because, you know, I always like to prepare you.
Always best to be prepared.
There can't be any big trees there, anything like that whatsoever?
Those red lines.
It's all septic system. So we're limited what we can do. So that's why we have put the trees where we can, here.
That's a bummer. I thought I was going to vote for this.
But when you look at this with all the trees that are here, it really hides it a lot more than what you expect.
I'm really sorry I have to disagree with you, John. When I look at that, if I stand between those two arrows on the street, or I'm walking by on the sidewalk, or I'm driving by in a car, those really loom large.
Well, if you stand in between those two arrows right now and look down there.
If you imagine a 60-degree cone of vision coming from your station point at the entrance, it greatly reduced... Here's your field of vision. So you have a, I guess I would call it a very narrow shot right through here.
Yep.
And that's just the area that you can see. Everything else is either building or tree.
That's a shame. That almost makes me want to go back to the raised island in the front, where we were before. Out in the front, do a raised island out in the front and put a tree or two to block right there. Just something to obscure that visual line of sight and knock that 60-degree cone down to like a 20-degree.
Well, that's exactly what's going to happen. Because your 60-degree is going to take the tree and the building. And it reduces... We could have our delineator show that.
Maybe I'll have a level of comfort if you have something like that shown with the, what would be called a rendering that would show that view.
I just wanted to... I wanted to bring you up.
And I hope I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong. It's a concern I have that that's just going to look as large as it is. And the object is to make it not be as massive-looking. Do we have a Form H issue? I'm sorry, Tilly, my apologies.
I like the roof line better than the flat, don't you, Ed? Even though you said it was...
Yeah.
This looks better.
Thank you.
Form H, John?
Yeah.
Do we have a Rita Form H on this?
Yeah, we do. Presently, we have till December 31st.
Okay, we need a Form H.
Our next meeting is December 13th, and thereafter is January 8th will be the first meeting in the next year.
We would request a continuance to the December 13th meeting.
Okay. All in favor of accepting a Form H extension of time to... What do we go to? What's the next...
March 31st.
To March 31st?
Yeah.
All in favor of accepting an extension of time, Form H, to March 31st?
You want a motion?
2020. Yeah, well, I'll just make the motion.
I second your motion.
No, no, I didn't make the motion. You made the motion.
I second it.
Okay.
You made the motion, Tilly seconded it.
He's still under the influence of Trump.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
March, the end of March.
And Larry, you know what you have to do. Folks, you're going to transfer all that information to Thad.
Yes.
Get some new plans up for us.
So this is on the December meeting, I think?
Yes.
Are we moving to December for this? What do we have for December? We only have one meeting in December, don't we, John? Hang on, guys, don't jump to conclusions.
That's our next meeting.
December, we have 554 North Street coming back and 196.
So we already have two public hearings. What's January look like?
January 8th is...
I'll take a motion to continue to January 8th?
Could I ask a question? I had spoken with John in advance, and I believe he suggested that perhaps the items that you just mentioned on the December 13th meeting would not be going forward. Most likely, at least one of them, if not both. And then you would have nothing.
Oh, no. The meeting before Christmas, we'd have nothing.
Hope and hope.
All in favor of...
That's our Christmas resolution.
Really, no, I'm quite serious about this.
I am as well.
We would... We would very much appreciate keeping this forward. We've got the revisions all done. We turned them around very quickly, although not in the one day, in order to get them in for tonight's meeting. So those are all done. We have very limited issues for Thad and Larry to discuss, although important issues, limited number. So we would very much like to be on the December 13th meeting, please.
Someone want to make a motion for continuation of the hearing?
You guys. Go ahead. I just heard the cats. I'm just the chairman.
If I make a motion, but what is...
How is the schedule looking?
Yeah. In response to...
Two public hearings on the December meeting, and the January meeting is wide open at this point. We can't keep doing this.
Now, just take into consideration that both of those items, 554 North and 196 West, those were continued date-specific to those dates. There's a possibility they, both of them, might not come, but I don't know what the definite...
It's a possibility I might not come.
Yeah, right. There's no definite, but that's what we're dealing with for two review items at the moment.
Two public hearings.
And I don't know what the actual definite, whether they're coming or not.
You know, but...
Is it possible to... If one of them cancels, then we then see them?
No.
It has to be definitive?
We have to... Every butter needs to know tonight when the continuation is.
Well, and you can continue it to the December 13th meeting, and then if it's full, you could then forward it to the January meeting. But that would at least give us the option of being here on December 13th. And then if both of those items that are ahead of us are here, then...
Just push us off?
We would be pushed off to January, but this will at least give us the opportunity of being heard on December 13th.
Does that give Larry enough time and Thad enough time to work out of it?
Well, yeah. Apparently, the plans are revised. If I get a letter, cover letter that's saying what was revised, how it was revised, plus the planned revisions.
Yep.
Couple weeks, turn it around.
Yep.
The other thing to take into consideration, we have a lot of issues that need to be looked at, and in all likelihood, with another public hearing tonight, we're not going to get to them. So those are four items. Additional items on our agenda tonight.
Oh, absolutely. We have to resolve it. And we also have a number of public hearings that we're going to be opening up. We might want to open on Christmas for that month. So that night might not be... We do have a number of public hearings that we're going to be opening.
That is...
Maybe not.
Yeah, most likely not. Because we're running out of time, and you have Thanksgiving.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
No. I'm listening to the board for a continuation here.
Talk to me, folks. Somebody make a motion, please.
So a question. I mean, can we explicitly continue this to the 11th, but explicitly say that it's contingent on other... I guess we can't really do that now.
That's what I just asked.
With the hearing.
No, but...
No, but I mean, still...
Please pull a coin out of their pocket and flip it.
I make a motion that we continue it to January... What's the meeting?
8th.
8th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to continue to January 8th to 2020. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, five votes, okay. Easy enough, done.
And you already voted on the Form H, which needs to be executed.
Form H is already voted. What else do we need to do? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to close it.
Just to have that executed, because they have to record it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's ministerial stuff.
Do you still have a Concom for anything in between?
Yeah, we'll be in Concom next.
Sounds like you're removing a lot of the...
First on the agenda for the eighth, let's try to wrap it up.
Let's try to wrap it up.
So can I ask a procedural question? Is that all right? So on January 8th, since we're being continued there, and we're a lot closer than what the board realizes with Larry, is it possible that the vote could be taken on January 8th? Is that possible?
Nothing's outside the realm of possibility.
If everything's resolved, right?
Even though we're not taking any information out, because we have continued this hearing. But, John, are we anywhere near anything for perhaps a draft decision or something?
Yeah. At the end of the next meeting, and I'm anticipating it'll probably be at least an hour left of review, and making sure we cross all our Ts on these landscape issues, the photometrics.
Photometrics.
You know, and if Larry's schedule allows him to come back, that would be very helpful to finalize the action of the board. So a draft motion could be at that meeting, that you would let me draft a decision that would be voted on at the following meeting, and that would be the second meeting in January. the second meeting in January. So we can, we can get there.
Sound good?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
I mean, you know what, and I'd like to add, and I don't know what Larry thinks about this, but, you know, these soils issues are very tricky. A lot of times, the only way you really figure it out is when you are actually digging all of the executions and seeing what's... So it has to be in, in the field review as it's being instructed. And there might be amendments way beyond what we're talking about, because we're still, they've done test bits, but we haven't seen everything.
Yeah, let's see what Thad and, uh, and Larry are, um, in a month.
Yeah.
Let's find out, right? That'll, that'll be, nothing's gonna happen real quick, but that's gonna take a little while.
In two months.
In, in two months, we'll know even more. Hopefully, we'll know a great deal.
We can't help it.
You have a long, long run with the, the Concom anyway, as you pointed out.
We can't help it.
I wouldn't say a long run.
You're removing a lot of material.
We appreciate your time tonight. I think this was very productive.
Hopefully.
Once again.
Thank you.
And, uh, Thad will get in touch with you.
Yeah. Form H, Nancy, and, um, the, uh, five-minute bathroom break, folks?
We can't help it.
...of the town from education to municipalities to sports and will always be. In 1979, when the landfill closed, which we actually ran for the town for a number of years, the town was at a loss as to what they were gonna do with their solid waste, the household solid waste. At that point, our family came to the town and proposed building one of the first transfer stations in the state, and it got approved and was built in 1981. So our experience running a transfer station in our eyes is second to none and we have a lot of history and background to it. Our commitment to the town of Georgetown, though, and community service, we feel is equally as important. I can't begin to detail all of our contributions to the town over the years. We have provided a great deal to education and recrea- recreational contributions. We've contributed to disaster relief over the years. But in regards to community service, we provided roll-off containers during the Pearly School flooding of what is now the senior center, all of which was free of charge. Each year, we work with Pete Durkey and the Highway Department and we supply labor to pick up litter on the streets. And last, this past spring, we donated just over 340 hours of man labor to clean the streets. We provide all municipal, municipal buildings with free trash and recycling services and all school facilities receive free pickup once per week, as well as a discounted pickup cost daily for the rest of the week. So thank you for your time and...
Thank you for that history. Thank you very much. Um, and this usually isn't something that's done, but I'd just like to call your attention to, uh, a, a letter from the selectmen.
Yeah.
Without going into detail, um, their support of this project, um, just thought I'd bring it up without reading it into the record. It is entered into the record by, by virtue of the fact that we received it as correspondence. Essentially saying a lot of good things. And we're gonna raining what a, what a good friend you've been, uh, corporate neighbor, as well as a resident to the town.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you so much.
And we did make a presentation to the selectmen at, at a recent meeting so that they understood this project and, and they chose to support.
The result of that, right?
Exactly.
Absolutely.
To proceed forward with the project, as Jason mentioned, um, G. Mello operates the existing transfer sta- station at 203 East Main Street and has done that for, for many years. That's on property that's shared with the Town D P W buildings. And a couple of years ago, D E P, Mass. D E P, uh, made it clear that the existing transfer sta- station does not meet current regs and it has to be upgraded, um, in order primarily to enclose the operation and to do other upgrades. Um, we started, uh, to go down the path involving Conservation Commission and Board of Appeals to do a considerable amount of work at that site that would be necessary to bring that facility as close to the current regs as could be, and that would involve enclosure of, of that site. During the course of that hearing process, it became clear that, um, the boards that we were dealing with, as well as residents that we were hearing from, thought perhaps there's a better location than attempting to retrofit that existing site. That site has issues with regard to traffic and circulation that due to the constraints of that site can't be dealt with, that it is what it is there. Is there a better location? And so Jason, uh, went about trying to locate a better location and found one, and that's the site that we have before you tonight. It's about 14 and a half acres, commercially zoned, where the existing site is not commercially zoned, um, immediately adjacent to I-95 and is a site that we can build from the ground up, so that it will be a state-of-the-art transfer station facility right from the start. It will meet all of the state regulations. It will comply with all dimensional intensity requirements under the zoning bylaw and we will be able, having a clean slate, to design a facility that's efficient, that works for circulation. We learn from the, the, the transfer station as we have now, what works, what doesn't work, and design a, a far better facility. And so that's what we're bringing to you, um, tonight. The proposed design again meets all, will meet all of the state regulations, as well as the local regulations. Um, we received Board of Appeals' approval in the form of a special permit, a copy of which is part of your package, so that this transfer station use on this site is permitted.
The use.
The use is permitted, exactly.
Absolutely.
Um, the, all appeal periods associated therewith have expired, and so the use by virtue of the special permit is permitted. We're now moving on to site plan approval. You saw this general layout during the course of the Board of Appeals', uh, process, because you made, uh, recommendations, uh, to the Board of Appeals then. Um, we took the recommendations that we heard from you, as well as from the Board of Appeals and others who, uh, who responded during the Board of Appeals' process, and incorporated those comments into the plans that you see. So hopefully, you'll see some of the comments that you made reflected in, um, in the current plans that you're going to see. Before we get into the plans, I just want to make sure everybody understands what a transfer station is and what a transfer station is not. And a transfer station takes in residential, commercial, and construction waste, trash, and debris. It's brought to the site, it's sorted, it's processed, so that it is then loaded and taken off-site to the appropriate final disposal, either a landfill or recycling center. But this site takes in the waste, sorts it, loads it, and it goes to its final destination. No materials remain on-site for longer than 72 hours. Everything that comes onto the site is, uh, is gone, uh, within 72 hours. There are no hazardous materials accepted at this facility. This is strictly residential and commercial, uh, waste and recycling, as well as construction You'll see on the presentation, uh, from my bird's eye view of this, um, we have a 30-foot-wide access driveway and a very, uh, well-designed and detailed residential drop-off area, separate from the commercial, uh, drop-off area and the 15,000-square-foot waste handling building, which is fully enclosed. The drop-off of materials into the, uh, the waste facility and the removal of materials to the final destination is all done inside. It's all done inside that building, and that's very important. That's what, uh, lets us qualify as meeting the, uh, Mass. D E P regulations. Again...
Can I interrupt you? Mass. D E P, and, I'm, I'm sorry, whoever can answer. So D E P is basically saying, the outdoor operations of transferring, sorting, and moving these materials on and off-site, that's, that's just, that went out with...
It's gotta be enclosed.
With, uh, Model A Ford.
Correct.
This is the new way of doing it.
Yep.
It's a clean facility, close doors, back the truck in, close the doors, do your sorting, load your transport trucks, and then get them out. Correct?
Exactly right.
Okay. And that's what D E P's model is, to move forward. Correct.
Right, right. You have received, um, a full package. That, uh, that package consists of the application form, a project narrative, a summary narrative of, of the operations, owner's authorization, an operation and maintenance plan is included in this application package, a traffic impact and access study is included, uh, building inspector's determination, of course, uh, together with the Board of Appeals' special permit, um, is part of the application package. You have a full site plan, including landscaping plan and building elevation drawings, 11 sheets, making up that plan set, as well as a stormwater management, uh, report. You have the letter from, uh, the, uh, Board of Selectmen, as well as a, a letter, comment letter from the building inspector, as well as the fire department. So with all of that, I think I will turn it over to Scott Cameron, our project engineer, to walk you through the details of the plan.
Thank you, Nancy. And, uh, thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. Of course, my name is Scott Cameron, I'm the owner and professional engineer with the Maury Cameron Group at 66 Elm Street in Damaris, Massachusetts. Um, I'm gonna do my best. I didn't, uh, provide the digital versions of these, but, um, I'm open to the extent that you can see this. I'll try to make it clear, I can bring it up too. But I'm gonna start from kind of the aerial view in and, uh, just walking into the site and then being the site plan, I'll walk you through the plans that are in our set and what's contained in them and... I'll, I'll chance to slide over. Uh, so this is, this is a aerial view looking down on the entire area, and what I've highlighted here, and you can see the gray of the D P W and transfer si- facility up East Main Street here, and then three-quarters of a mile down southeasterly towards I-95, you have the footprint of the site here. Okay, so, but what's interesting about this is... But what's interesting about this is the massing. You can see where they're operating DEW and solid waste transfer here with the buildings scattered around compared to the size of this. And as we're going through the site plan, as far as the scale, we actually have a larger facility here for just solid waste transfer as the entire DEW and solid waste at the site now. So, just to give you a perspective of why the site's going to be easier to use and operate. Zooming in, this is looking again from above, just at the site. What we're looking at now is zoomed in. You can see Carlton Drive here. You can see I-95 with the exit ramp, East Main Street. And again, here's the site. I've highlighted the entire property, 14.6 acres, in yellow. There's the footprint of the actual used portion of the site. And you can see the small, the maroonish color here is the building. Compared to the existing industrial buildings that are already on Carlton Drive at a 15,000-square-foot footprint, this is very small compared to what's on the site. But most of the operations and facility occur as far as the usability of this are outside. And I'm going to walk through the plans. So, this property, it's got an interesting history over the last couple of decades. It was approved for industrial use back in the early 2000s. They actually proceeded and went forward to start to develop this site. And the result of that is what you see today. As you come down to the end of Carlton Drive, which abuts I-95, they cut in a driveway, an access road coming into the site. It's still gravel. It's started to overgrow. And they had cleared the entire property all the way back and started filling. So, there's stockpiles and fill through the entire, I will say, upland portion of the middle of the property. Those operations occurred for a period of time, and then they stopped. And it appears to have been sitting like that ever since. So, we pass forward to today, 17 somewhat years later. Today, we did a full survey of the property. It's all right. Larry's going to take care of it. It's stink bug season. Yeah, they're lovely. My daughter loves them. She doesn't...
Thank you, Larry.
So, we did a full boundary survey of the property. We did a little of a stink bug for a little break. It is getting late. We had all the wetlands delineated by LEC Environmental. We surveyed all those wetlands. We surveyed existing conditions through the property. So, we have an updated existing conditions plan reflecting what's on the ground today.
Quick question with that, just for reference. You said you had the wetlands surveyed.
Yes.
Did CONCOM do an ORAT, or what is it they do?
Yes, so you did file and brief an notice of resource area delineation with the commission. Everything was reviewed by their consultant, the commission. We were expecting to have that closed out at the last meeting. However, there's a quorum issue. So, we expect that to be closed out at the next meeting.
You expect an order at the next meeting?
And we've been told, you know, the consultant has signed off on it. They've done all their work, so we're not...
Thank you.
So, anything... So, what was approved back in the early 2000s, actually, by the commission, this is before the regulations that we know today were in place, but they had a permit to approve to effectively fill this driveway through a wetland to get access out to the site. The result of that was a pocket of wetland here that is cut off from the rest of the wetland system that continues off to kind of the northeast and connects up with culverts that go under 95 and continue further northeast. And then there's another wetland system out back, which you can see where it had been kind of filled and altered and there's pockets. This is all delineated. There's a small vernal pool here. There's another one off-site. There's an intermittent stream that fills up the property. And I call this your attention, you know, as we go through this, one of the things you'll be looking at in the technical review is the environmental impacts. So, I feel it's really important that we're on the same page with what we're dealing with in the site today and what we're proposing, and also how we got there. So, this wetland's connected by a culvert. So, there's a 12-inch culvert that connects that. So, the water does flow through here. It doesn't impound it in that area. It does flow off-site. And this is more linear, but there's buffer zones. And really, the entire middle of the site, it's all filled in debris and soil. So, how did we get to the site design? When we first started looking, I was actually pulling out our initial memo to Jason back last November 19th. We sent it out. It's been one year. You know, one of the first things we started looking at was, you know, how are we going to do solid waste transfer station at this property? And the easy thing to say, you know, to start with was, well, we'll just widen the driveway coming in. It's already there. We'll widen that. And we started looking at alternatives for that. And of course, depending which side of the property you come in, determines on how this site is going to operate. So, as we're going through alternatives, what we actually found and settled on was coming from this side of the site had a lot of benefits, both from circulation, environmental, constructability impacts, and also the benefits to restoring areas that were degraded and connecting wildlife corridors that extend off the property. So, I'll start with the environmental impacts or the benefits of how we arrived at this. As I said, this road was built through here. So, this wetland was cut off from this system. Now, it's very flat. We're working right up along the wetland here. And to widen this, we're filling wetland anyways to widen this. We have a crossing here. We have to reconstruct. And what we end up at the end of the day is a lot of alteration in the buffer zone. And we're basically cutting this wetland off from the main wetland. So, we're further exacerbating what's already been cut off. So, from environmental perspective, as we look to mitigate some wetland alteration here on the edge of this, we're restoring this. We're restoring this wetland. And we're making this a continuous corridor through here, right? So, now we have one continuous wetland. Of course, where this ends, it's the paved parking lot of the adjacent industrial site. Okay? So, that was a big environmental consideration. Again, with this road coming in, yes, we do have some actual wetland filling here. It's a little more wetland filling, but we have a significantly less run between buffer zones than we do here. So, we had less overall impact in the buffer zone. We had less, even though we're altering a little more wetland, it's on the very end of it, and it's right up against the parking lot here. So, we felt we were on the edge of it. This was really an idea. So, if you look at the total impact in the buffer zone and to the resources, that's why we chose that location. The other driving factor, and from a planning perspective, and what the public would eventually realize using the site, is how it's actually going to operate. So, as you come into the site as it's designed now, circulation is going to operate in a clockwise manner, okay? So, as you come into the main drive, the lane in splits into two. So, you have your commercial drop-off, and you have your residential drop-off. The commercial goes to the scale. The residential goes by the scale. And trucks can come in, back in. All the drop-off happens inside the building. And the same for any smaller vehicles. They back in. All the drop-off occurs in the building. They pull out. The residential cars come out this way. The commercial trucks come back out this way, get weighed in the way out, and they exit the site. It worked very well. And again, it was a shorter run getting to the building. For the household waste drop-off area, now, this is going to be more active on weekends. This is when people come in with their waste, they're taking out of their cars, any type of car.
Couple of bags.
It's busy, right? It can be busy. You see, yeah, a couple of bags or, you know, my house, you know, a dozen every week. I don't know how we do it. But the way we set this up, it's very structured and orderly. So, as you come in, you enter into the drop-off lane. There are 10 parking spaces arrayed on an angle. Angle space is very easy to pull into, very easy to back out. You don't have to worry about parallel parking in between cars. You know what spaces are open. You don't need to leapfrog people as you're going. The spaces are oversized. They're 10 by 20, not your regular 9 by 18 space, which you'd be seeing at more of a retail application. They're 10 by 20, so they're big and oversized. We added a five-foot-wide loading zone on the back of those spaces. So, as you pull in, you've got another five feet to open up your trunk and take your trash out without being in the lane. And then there's a large eight-foot-wide walkway in the front of it with a curb. So, when you come out, handicap accessible, you've got access to the loading bins. Once you finish, you get back in your car. You back out again on an angle, so it's easy. You come out, and either you go drop off bulk items back in the building or you leave the site. The grade is also considered here. The bins will be set about four feet below where you're parking here. So, you're loading from the top. So, the public and the interface with that are separate from the commercial operations. As these bins fill up in their compacters, they need to be pulled out. So, we've got that barrier vertical with a wall and guardrails to make sure that the people aren't walking in this area where the bins could be pulled out or if they're being backed in, because somebody doesn't accidentally not pay attention, get in the way, right? So, we have this completely separate from the drop-off area. This will be a really efficient operation for people coming in and out. And there's also a small, there'll be a small accessory building here just for somebody for shelter to receive permits for the drop-offs and the attendant just to monitor activities on the site. Flipping this the other way, this all kind of reverses. And that's an important note when we talk about where the doors in the building are located. These are going to be 50-foot-wide doors. These doors are oriented directly at I-95. It's 200 feet to the property line. It's another 100 feet to the highway. This is all vegetated woods down in this area. So, all, any potential noise that's generated from this use is pointed directly at the highway. I did some research. The Federal Highway Administration publishes noise information or, you know, decibel levels of certain operations. So, a highway will typically generate, you know, when you're about 200 feet away, decibel level's around 50. Diesel engine running inside the building generates about the same level, about 50. So, when you're standing about 100 feet away. Other interesting comparisons, your average house is going to run around 45 decibels, right, with kids and noise and dogs and mechanical systems. A lawnmower, when you're on that, is going to be running closer to 100, very loud.
What's a backup alarm, about 85 to 110 or something like that?
It's going to be in that zone. And again, yes, so that's a good point. So, that beeping sound, again, all that oriented directly at the highway. So, by bringing the entrance in this manner, it allows it to orient the building this way. So, from a planning and layout perspective, we are directing it at the existing noise source, not towards, well, this is a parking lot and then a building, not in that direction, and not towards the wooded area in the back. And I'll bring this board back out because the nearest residential property is 1,000 feet away. That's just from the nearest point of this building, on this corner, opposite all the operation, through almost all woods to the nearest house. And then this way, 1,200 feet to the nearest house on the other side of this large industrial building. And again, on the back side of that building. So, we really don't anticipate, from a noise perspective, A lot of color on this plan. I'll just explain what that is quickly. This is the grading and utility plan, John.
If I could just interrupt you. And I don't mean to cut off any important information that we're listening to. This is the first initial opening of the public hearing. It is a public hearing, and it is 9:30.
Okay.
And we went a little long with our last one. We're victims of that, unfortunately. That's one of the reasons. We try to limit these to one or two hearings in a night. I'd like to get public hearing in, public comments, just so that we could record that. It looks like you have a good turnout here tonight. Don't know if everybody's here ready to raise a palm palm or ready to raise a pitchfork, but...
I think it's important for us perhaps to show, maybe not the technical stuff...
I can get into that.
Right.
But maybe let's, how about we get into, we have our landscape architect here. Let's look at the landscape plan and what we're proposing for buffer because that was a comment that came up from the planning board when you made your comments to the Board of Appeals. That's something that often neighbors are interested in, both from an aesthetic point of view and noise consideration. So, why don't, if you'd like, why don't we have our landscape architect talk about that? Rather than drainage, maybe, and stuff like that?
Yeah, Nancy, but I see hands raising in the audience. And I want to address that.
With all due respect.
Sounds like, sir.
With all due respect.
Excuse me, sir, if you'd like to make a comment, certainly welcome to hear it. Love to hear it. You need to state your name and your address for the record?
My name is John Sammler. I am the owner of American Power Service. We are at 16 Carlton Drive, which is the abutting building.
Okay.
And most of us, I think, I'm sure would love to listen to landscape.
Sir, I'm so sorry. Tilly's having a little trouble hearing me.
I'm sorry.
Could you come up a little bit?
It's rare that someone can't hear me. My name is John Sammler. I own American Power Service. We are located at 16 Carlton Drive, which is the abutting property. And I think while landscaping is wonderful, it is 9:30, and most of us would like to hear about the traffic situation, okay? Really not too interested. There's a lot of trees out there. We're in the woods, okay? What kind of trees are out there is not a big deal to us. Traffic is a concern.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Our traffic consultant is prepared.
Well, we have a traffic consultant. Why don't we hear about that? That's a good point. I know that this could all be rolled into a quick four-minute presentation.
I'll do my best. So, some of this information may have already been heard through the zoning board process. So, I will try to keep it as brief as possible for those that may not have heard it before. So, my name is Rebecca Brown. I'm here from Greeman Peterson. So, we did prepare the traffic impact and access study that was included in your package. One thing I also want to note is that we also did prepare a supplemental to that original traffic impact study, which hopefully you also have in your package as well. So, the original traffic study that we did was done back in February, where we collected traffic counts at four study area intersections. One that included the intersection here at Carlton Drive and Route 133, and then also the ramps coming on and off of the highway. The reason that those were done is that we anticipate the majority of the new trips that would be coming in and out of the site would be coming to and from the highway. And that's really related to the fact that most of the new trips are larger trucks, larger commercial vehicles, where the residential component that would generate a lot of the passenger vehicles is not really expected to change much from the current operations. It's just really moving down the road. So, those counts were collected back in February. We grew those out to a seven-year design horizon. We did adjust those seasonally to account for the fact that February tends to be a lower traffic generating month. So, we did grow those out seasonally and annually based on a 1% per year growth rate to a future year condition. And then we also added the traffic that would be generated by this project on top of it. The original traffic study that we did was a very conservative study that basically assumed that this was an entirely new facility and didn't take into account the trips that would just be relocated down the street from the existing facility. The study that we did, the supplemental study that was done back in April, looked at what is a more realistic analysis in terms of how much new traffic would be generated by this facility. So, we actually went out and we did counts back in April at the existing facility to see how much traffic is that generating and comparing it to what we anticipate the new facility would generate. And I think that's probably the thing that everyone is the most interested in seeing. So, this table here, which might be a little bit hard to read, but I'll kind of explain some of the numbers as we go along, shows you what the existing facility here is currently generating based on the traffic counts that we did in these first two columns. And it's broken out based on the heavy vehicles, which includes like the roll-off trailers, the tractor-trailer vehicles and stuff coming in and out. And then the passenger vehicles, which could include some of your landscaping-type vehicles, contractor vehicles, pickup trucks, and some of those that could be coming in and out. So, there could be some small commercial vehicles in here, too. But these are sort of the smaller trucks. This section here is showing you the proposed facility and what we anticipate that would generate. And similarly, we have that broken out by the large roll-off trailers, tractor-trailer trucks, those types of vehicles that would be coming in and out. And then the smaller commercial vehicles and the residential traffic. And then this last section here is showing you what the net increase would be.
An excellent question. Tilly would like to know if we received that.
Yeah, so this is included in the supplemental traffic impact study.
Did we get that done?
Yes.
You got the traffic study in the...
But not the supplemental.
Supplemental was also included.
It was included, yeah.
But you know what? You got to really cut through the chase.
Four minutes is up.
You know, we don't need all the background information. What is the existing traffic counts going on, and what other...
Yeah, so on an existing day, for the existing facility, it's generating roughly 600 passenger vehicles and roughly 100 trucks that are coming in on a weekday. And then on Saturday is a little bit different because the truck operations are not as heavy, so it's only about 30 trucks that are coming in and out, and just under 800 passenger vehicles that are coming in and out. And these were done, as I mentioned, in April.
So what's the total for the week? Can you give me one number?
What the total across the entire week is?
The whole week?
I mean, we could take this number, multiply it by five, and...
All right, let's have it.
Six.
So it's, yeah, 600.
The total week, okay.
That's on a weekday.
The whole week.
Five times, so...
Okay.
Roughly 3,000.
3,000 cars.
And then another 1,600 on the weekend, assuming that it's a Saturday and Sunday.
4,500.
That's across the entire week. And that's with the existing facility.
Existing.
And that's the passenger vehicles that are in there.
What hours would these run on?
Excuse me? I'm sorry?
Leah Craig Spalding Road.
Leah Craig Spalding Road. Okay. What is your question? What is your question? I'm sorry.
Hours.
Hours. When is, when are the operating hours when the people on Carlton Drive will not be able to get in and out of their property?
What are the operating hours of the facility? Nancy, can you answer that?
I cannot answer that.
So we had originally said roughly 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM would be the receipt of materials.
Every day?
That would be on weekdays. And then on weekends was 7:30 to 12:00 PM.
So seven to...
Saturday and Sunday.
Seven o'clock.
Saturday and Sunday.
And the weekends?
We're going to increase on Friday, most likely, but Saturday and Sunday would stay closing at noon. And Saturday and Sunday, we're not looking for the increase, so it's, it would basically be an existing condition of what was being generated right now.
Nothing before 7:00.
Would that be Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
Yes.
Nothing before 7:00 in the morning. I see another hand.
Hi, my name is Christian Christensen. I live at 1 Katy Lane in Georgetown. It was my understanding that the truck traffic was different from the residential traffic. The truck traffic had an expanded window of operation that they would receive trucks, I believe, up until 6:00 o'clock in the evening.
So...
Seven days a week, or am I incorrect?
Yep, so the hours for receipt of materials are till about 3:00 PM. The hours of operation for employees are actually extended until 5:00 PM on the weekdays. So there may be a handful of trucks that would be picking up materials and leaving with those in that 3:00 to 5:00 PM window, but the facility would be closed after 5:00 PM, and there wouldn't be any more truck traffic.
And that would be... So just so that we're all clear on this?
Be on the weekends as well. Excuse me.
So that we're all clear on this? It sounds to me like at 7:00, nothing before 7:00 AM, any day of the week, and potentially up till 5:00, there might be some heavy hauling going on.
Correct.
But nothing outside the hours of 7:00 to 5:00 on any given day of the week.
And that's weekday.
And that's weekday.
Let's get weekend.
On weekends, it's reduced.
On weekends, there will not be any exiting tractor-trailers after close. There won't be tractor-trails exiting on weekends.
You're just receiving the material.
Just receiving.
Right, yeah, so there won't be any of that large...
So they might be there working and cleaning up, but there's not going to be any traffic once it closes afternoon.
That's what we're trying to focus on.
And the receiving time on the weekend, again, just so that we're all clear.
7:00 to noon.
7:00 to noon.
7:00 to noon.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I saw a hand here. Please, sir?
John Doc Spalding Road. This is, I'm afraid to ask this question because there's nowhere near enough time to answer it, but how do you determine these numbers? Because to me, bumping up four vehicles on a day with a piece of land that could conceivably be so much closer to the highway, so much easier for other communities to bring passenger vehicles, so how do you determine that?
Yeah, that might be a question that Jason might be able to...
Perhaps I could cut that off. The way that traffic studies are done, maybe it would be just a little bit more, a lot easier if you read the traffic study yourself. We can provide a copy for you. It's something that we certainly do.
I can give a quick overview.
Yeah. As interesting as the dynamics behind all of this science is, I don't think it, this is the time to learn it. I think there are other questions that we might want to approach, and we'll certainly go into it on another evening. I doubt very much, we're not going to close tonight, we're just scratching the surface tonight, but there are a few more things, and it's pushing quarter to 10:00 right now, sir. I'm sorry about that.
No, this is why I said this.
Absolutely. And, sir?
Yes, hi, I'm Brian Doc Angelo. I work at Cambridgeport, the full-up Carlton Drive. And I guess my question is, number of trucks per day, and the flow in and out. It looks like the only access is down Carlton Drive, which to me seems problematic. The design calls for up to 500 tons of processed waste a day, so I don't know. You said 600 trucks in per week?
I, if I can, I think we need to...
300 a day, in and out.
I think we need to...
There's 100 trucks, or 100 vehicle trips per day. A vehicle, and that's truck trips, vehicle, truck trips in per day. So a trip is either one vehicle in or one vehicle out. So that's 50 trucks that would be coming in and out on a weekday, and that would be five days a week. They would not be coming in on the weekend.
You've got 280 trucks a day.
Yeah, sorry, so I was looking at this first call.
Forget that. 280 trucks a day.
So this is the one...
Right. Yeah, that's the one I care about.
So it's 140 trucks that will be coming in, and those same 140 trucks on the weekdays.
So roughly triple. Folks, can we, the group discussion doesn't work. I'm really sorry. One at a time, please, because we have to take minutes, and this is all turned into minutes through the tape, so if there's a lot of voices, you can't attribute it to the right person. Sir?
John Sammler again. So our concerns, Cambridgeport and myself, and I have a slightly bigger one. The entrance to Carlton Drive coming from the east...
From the highway.
Highway. In order for a tractor-trailer to make that swing onto Carlton, he has to take both lanes of Carlton Drive. Possibly get on the turn without making, taking both lanes. If you have vehicles exiting, 100, almost 200 vehicles exiting, and you have vehicles trying to come in, unless you're going to have someone standing there and stopping the vehicles exiting, you're going to have a massive traffic jam at the exchange, because the trucks can't get in until the trucks going out get out of the way. That's one.
I understand. You have major concern about the traffic there.
No, and I'm talking about the flow, not so much the numbers.
We will look at that, sir.
Numbers don't concern me.
We will look at that. That will be closely examined.
Number two is...
You're not the first person to mention that.
The driveway length, the current, the existing station, transfer station driveway from 133 to the weigh station is 685 feet, okay? The new driveway for the residential is 260 feet, and for the trucks is longer, but not, so what you've got is shorter driveways, which means, as we all know, traffic on a Saturday is backed up onto 133 now. You're going to have a shorter driveway, which means they're going to be backed up onto Carlton Drive consistently. I try to run a business there as this Cambridgeport. As it stands right now, when people park on the sides of Carlton Drive, you can barely get one truck in or out. If there is a line of trucks and cars stopped waiting to get to the transfer station, we are not going to be able to get vehicles into our facilities at all. They're going to be sitting in a long line, waiting their turn to come down the road.
I understand your concern.
That's what I'm concerned.
Do you have a response to that, sir?
Yes, we absolutely, to both items. Number one, the entrance onto Carlton Drive, we discussed that at great length at the Board of Appeals, and we anticipate we'll do that the same here for you folks.
We will address that.
Absolutely. And that may be a longer presentation than you want to hear tonight. However, the driveway length issue, I think, is an important one because Scott discussed how the site was laid out, and he can address that specifically, and I think, why don't we have you do that right now? And it has to do with...
Very briefly.
The far greater efficiency of the new facility versus how the existing facility operates.
Move things along.
200 feet versus the 600 feet isn't really, it's apples to oranges because of a flow difference of the internal flow of the traffic.
Exactly right.
Another question, sir? Again, say your name, please, for the person who types this up.
John Doc Spalding Road. I have another 30 questions, but I'll stop at one. How many vehicles can fit into that building at any time, and how is that different than the existing building or area that you back up to?
Excellent question. Can I ask?
So right now, our tipping floor is 60 feet wide, and the new tipping floor will be 100 feet wide. The biggest difference is going to be the bottleneck effect that we have right now, where everyone's coming into one entrance. We have one scale for in and out, so everyone's waiting just along to get out as they are to get in. They're not waiting on the actual tipping floor. And then you have the residential, the residents coming in that are trying to come into the same entrance, and it just creates a bottleneck the entire time. So by breaking the residents off before you even get to the building, you're eliminating them from the traffic. The trucks are going to come in and out quicker over the scales, having an inbound and an outbound, and we're almost doubling the tipping floor area, so the trucks, we can have it separated where the trucks that dump faster can be on one side, if your hand unloaded, can be on the other.
So what you're saying is the...
It's all about management.
The Saturday-long lines are hopefully a thing of the past.
Saturday-long lines are all because of having one scale in and out, and so many residents show up. It's not the waiting, it's not the time it takes them to dump, it's the time to get into it and back out of it.
This is showing two scales now.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
That's all. Any more hands? And I'm just trying to reach as many...
Brian Doc Angelo of Cambridgeport again.
I'd like people that haven't, anybody that hasn't had a chance?
One more question.
Is there anybody that hasn't said anything, that would like to say anything? Okay, then, okay.
Joanna Talbot, I live on Tenny Street. I mean, you know, I'm on the opposite side, so I feel like visually and sound-wise, it probably wouldn't affect me. But I have to say, I keep asking myself, why are we doing this? I mean, we're coming in like one of the main roads into Georgetown. There's already heavy traffic, you know, during rush hour, and like everyone said, the traffic issue, turning trucks into that road, it's very narrow. There's a few, you know, residential houses that are going to be severely impacted by this, more than maybe any of the other businesses, and it's our main entrance to Georgetown. Welcome to Georgetown. Why do we want to do that here?
What did you say your name was again? Your address?
I'm Talbot, and I'm on Tenny Street.
On Tenny Street?
Yeah.
And how far did you say this facility is from Tenny Street?
The closest is 1,000 feet to Spalding.
Yeah, I don't feel like personally that it's going to impact me as much, but it's just like the driving into the town.
Okay, you're not speaking as an authority. Okay, I understand.
The congestion and poor Carlton Drive. Have 3,000 trucks or cars a week? I mean, that's like insane.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, I'm s...
Kathy Birmingham, Trulane. Right now, we hear 133. Trulane is the street, so you have Carlton here, Trulane runs along the forest.
Further down, yeah.
So the wetland is already deteriorating.
Trulane is on the other side of 133, right?
Right there.
If I'm not mistaken. Okay, there we go.
So that whole little strip there is deteriorating. The water used to dry up, it doesn't dry up anymore. The noise alone from 133 has gotten louder and louder. This is just going to make it worse.
Is there anything else?
No, just the noise.
Absolutely. So we have noise concerns.
It's noise concerns.
It's getting late, I'll put my apologies...
It can't come and go. It's a pain in the neck, can't get out.
Can I just ask one question? How many tons per truck?
It varies. So that's how we're getting the increase in the tonnage without showing a huge increase in amount of traffic, because right now, we're getting the passenger vehicles, the homeowners, and the small contractors in the media area. So the increase in tonnage, it's not impacting the amount of vehicles as much because it's going to be the larger trucks, where a roll-off truck, which is considered a heavy truck, but realistically, it's a three-axle straight truck that can make that turn no problem, and that's going to range anywhere from 3.5 to 5 ton. Tractor-trailers, I don't accept tractor-trailers, tractor-trailers are strictly outbound, so they pull in, get loaded, and haul the material back out. And a tractor-trailer is going to hold anywhere from 23 to 28 ton ballpark.
28 going out.
Yes. So they'll be coming in empty all the time. And those will be the only trucks leaving after hours. So there's a small percentage of them, so they're not even crossing paths, realistically.
Well, is everybody good?
I just had one more.
Sure.
You wanted to let other people talk.
If there's anybody else that hasn't spoken, or wants to speak, again, it's almost 10 o'clock, we're not going to approve this this evening, believe me. We have a lot to do, and there are some, there are some issues we need to resolve in the board. If there are more comments, things to look for...
Brian from Cambridgeport again, not to beat a dead horse, it's just, I'm confused a bit about the number of vehicles per day that are going to be going in and out of the facility on Carlton Drive. Given an eight-hour day.
And I assure you, we'll get clarity on that as this process goes on. You'll certainly have the chance to ask it again, and you'll probably be, the board will probably be asking it, and consulting engineers will be asking it. Anything else, folks? I just want to, I just want to touch anything in case there's anything that this board doesn't normally do in its review, that you folks might have that might come up sometimes.
Amy Smith, 1 Katy Lane. I thought I heard Mr. Melon say something about after-hours?
After-hours? Were you referring to after, 3:00 in the afternoon, or something like that?
I was making sure I'm going to make it clear, what you meant by after-hours traffic.
So we stop taking inbound material at 3:00?
Right.
But between 3:00 and 5:00, there will be outbound material leaving.
You're loading the trucks, and those roll out from the facility up until 5:00 PM?
Correct.
And then there's no more hours?
The only trucks coming in are going to be the same tractor-trailer going out, and it's not, we won't be open to the public, so it's not going to be a large influx.
So keep it, keep in mind that as part of, as part of this, it will be 7:00 AM, no later than 5:00, and that will be a condition, that will be, okay?
Chairman?
Yes, John, one more question from this young lady.
Leah Craig Spalding Road. We've lived in Georgetown a long time, and years ago, not too many though, there was this dumpster factory there, and for a while, it ran night and day producing dumpsters. It was very noisy, and would wake you in the middle of the night because they bring those boxes out. And they weren't really big ones they were making there. Now, you're talking about these big, big, big fuck loader thingies, and they're going to make noise. I hate, they're going to be very loud.
You have noise concerns.
Yeah.
We will, we, I assure you, we will address that.
Most of the big issues.
We will address. All of the concerns you folks have, we will address a great number of those. That's why we have these hearings, that's why we have these permitting process. We will address as best we can. Anything else? Okay, good. Let's bring it to the board. Let's bring it to John.
Yeah. Traffic is always a concern with one of these, and it is a large transfer station. So the whole idea, when you're describing the traffic impact, so you want to make sure that you're starting out with your explanation of the traffic report. What are the existing conditions on the intersections that are impacting? So what are the levels of service going on right now within the legs of the interchange?
Mm-hmm.
Exit fifty-four. What, what are the levels of service of traffic right now?
Which Rebecca has all of that.
No, I just wanna explain for our next meeting, not to get into it tonight. And then, you know, what is the level of service at Carlton Drive right now on 133, Trulane, Tenny Street? And what will be the impact of the main intersection in downtown Georgetown at East Main, West Main? One of the things that was brought out during the ZPA is to try to focus all of the heavy traffic associated with this use, putting it on ninety-five. So it's getting off of exit fifty-four, and it's getting on exit fifty-four, trying to divert all this heavy trucking that's coming through town via 133, ninety-seven. You know, everybody in, in trucks, like everybody in cars, tries to travel on the, you know, the least congested roadways, and they figure things out, and those least congested roadways become congested over time.
Absolutely.
So, we need to know, what are the affected intersections? What are the existing levels of service? And what are they, what are the levels of service after this opens? So that's, that's the best way to describe a traffic issue.
Excellent.
You know, because everybody believes that, you know, something new is coming to town, I'm not gonna be able to get out of my house.
Let's, let's, let's look at it closely. Let's look at it closely and have that opportunity there. Did that raise another question?
Last, uh, last comment for me. John Duff, Spalding Road.
Gonna hold you to that.
For this, for this hearing?
For tonight.
For tonight. I think it was mentioned that they did a research on where they thought would be a good place to put this. And I'm just surprised, did they look over at Tyburn's concrete area, along the access road? It would just seem to me as though that would have been a much easier place to put it.
I, I, I really-
It's not available.
It's unavailable.
I know.
And, if I'm not mistaken, it has access issues.
Has access issues.
Yeah, there are access issues with, with that parcel. I know the, I believe I know the one you're talking about. Not, not-
The town-owned land.
The town-owned, yeah.
Correct.
The town-owned land has no frontage. But anyway, thank you, thank you for the comment. At this point, I think, unless anybody has a question, okay?
Well, I think with the traffic, I would like to know, how many cars are going in the existing facility?
I think that's what-
They, they show that.
And, and trucks. That's, that's what I'm gonna compare it to. I don't-
That is what we had on the chart, but we will do it again, and, and make it more clear.
Maybe, maybe when it's a little earlier in the night, we can, we can delve into-
And really, I have to say, traffic, the time allotted tonight, given the lateness, is difficult to do the traffic report for this, and I think is a little unfair to Rebecca.
And I wanna compare it to the tonnage. I wanna compare it to, how much tonnage is going in the existing one? And how many trucks? And then, the increase that you're asking for.
That is exactly the information we have. That, that is on the chart that we showed, but we'll show it again, and, and traffic really does take-
Did you give that to us in the packet?
Yes. Yeah.
Break it down by how many trucks per hour.
Where is it?
Right, I mean, per week is kinda difficult. Typical traffic reports are per day and peak hour.
Yes.
And we have all of that information, and that, really, the, a traffic presentation needs to go through the whole gamut. And unfortunately, this, this got a little broken up, because you wanna hear different concerns.
Trying to, trying to hear all the concerns.
Kind of an overview, which is helpful to us as well.
Yeah.
But a traffic report and presentation needs to go from point A to point B, cover what John was asking for, and we have all of that information, which we'll present.
Attorney, I would also request that we give, we be given a digital presentation with this traffic report.
Okay.
All right. And we, we now have everything up and running, and, you know, just for everybody-
Summarization purposes?
Yeah. To be, be able to clearly see.
Absolutely.
But, you know, when you're talking about numbers of traffic, yeah, they're interesting.
Tough, tough.
But it's level of service, and that means, it's either an A, B, C, D.
Or D, yeah.
Or off the charts.
Without the road.
So, you know, everybody, everybody needs to know what that volume of traffic associated with this proposed use is going to result in the line of traffic for the affected intersections.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll certainly be looking into that, if you're interested, and, folks are interested in traffic studies, it's a fascinating area.
Yeah.
At this point-
I just have one thought.
Sure, go ahead.
That, if there's such an issue with the volume, why do you allow people and trucks from out of town coming into the transportation?
Currently?
Yeah. Can't you just limit it to Georgetown?
We're open to the public.
But if, if traffic becomes an issue, could you then close it just to Georgetown residents?
Not easily, no.
No?
Don't think that works on a business model.
No. Just 'cause I thought there were other transport stations where I thought it was just for residents only, or my-
There are, there are. There's one, I mean, and I think your, I think your name on one of them in Newbury.
That's open to the public as well, not just residents.
You mean, I could go over there and dump?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, the volume over there is a lot less than what we have in town. And that place, if you wanted to look at a good service center, it is spotless.
It's yours?
Whenever I've gone by there-
Your, your-
I manage it for the town owner.
The town owns it.
Oh, it's now, I manage it, yes.
You manage. That's spotless. I have never seen Georgetown dump.
That's why we wanna build the new facility to keep the followers.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm wondering at this point in time if the board wants to consider having a peer review done of the traffic.
Absolutely. I'll take a motion to have Larry Graham do a peer review for this, for this project.
I'm not a qualified traffic consultant and engineer.
I'm looking at regular review, Larry, if you-
Be happy to, you know, do an overview.
If you know somebody that you can subcontract the, the traffic review for-
Let me take a look at it.
Take a look at it, send us your recommendations, whether you, take a look at it, whether you think we should hire an additional reviewer, or if you think you can summarize it.
Okay.
Let us know what you think.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, Larry's to be contracted for that. We have your M account and everything all set up, all that, all that good, good stuff.
The regular peer review. So, and the other vote we need is for Larry to begin his peer review of the site plans, his peer review of-
Interestingly enough, it's called Site Plan, and I get that. The total area of, of what you're showing there that you use, and how much of that? With respect to, I, I know the, the whole site's like a half a million square feet or something, right?
About fifteen acres, so, it's about, it's about five. I get, can you give a more precise number of here, are you basing the fee on that?
No, no.
About three acres, I think.
No, 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 we're not.
There's no limit to the fee.
There's no limit.
No, just the, just the, the whole idea of how much you're actually affecting there.
Oh, oh, oh.
Do you have a ballpark?
I, I don't wanna misrepresent anything.
Okay.
It's under five acres.
See, it's about five acres?
It's under that one.
Under five acres?
Definitely.
Okay, but at least three?
Yep.
Okay, good, good enough, okay.
I mean, because we're trying to determine, another big item to determine is whether or not we're going to consider this as a major development, or if it's something less than that.
Well, a major development, to my recollection, is anything that generates more than one thousand vehicle trips, or any new use that, any new use, wow, it is getting late, I can't even read anymore, any new use that, of greater than thirty thousand square feet. So, I think it fits the definition very clearly of a major development review.
The building inspector has looked at this and has given you his opinion that this does not trigger the threshold for a major development review.
Unfortunately, he's wrong.
As he is a code enforcement officer.
The last sentence of his determination qualified that, you know, with the additional information he may alter his decision.
Well, it says, it says five hundred vehicle trips per day.
It's a thousand vehicle trips in a commercial district.
A thousand vehicle trips per day or more in the general commercial district.
Right.
Or five hundred vehicle trips per day in any other district.
But, the, we're talking one eighty-five dot-
Eighty.
Eight-zero dot two.
Lesson I went through this.
B four. I think you didn't get down to B four.
I think we did, but we'll look at it again.
The use is more than thirty thousand square feet. Your building's fifteen thousand square feet, but-
Take a look at it.
Yeah. It's pretty easy to see that the proposed building is a small, little piece of what you're using, the use.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
It has to be emphasized.
Go ahead.
You know, say, we wouldn't even be possibly entertaining this, except for the fact that the dynamic of this proposal is that the present facility is well into 133, and it does impact the flow of traffic for the community. And it's amazing that it does work as well as it does in such a narrow part of 133. I mean, everything that's turning in, making a left-hand turn, has to stop for everything eastbound, and there's no going around at that location. I, I travel 133 a lot, just like everybody else does, and it's just amazing that I have not yet, and I haven't been there on a Saturday, when you're really busy with residential stuff, but I have not yet met up, and I'm traveling this during the day, with a traffic queue going in and out. I don't really see that much traffic actually going in or out, but you're operating.
Correct.
And you're in full operation.
Correct.
But, you know, it's, it's along that tight section of 133, and it's well within the interior of the community. The whole idea with this is to find a better site. The better site happens to be right off of the highway, budding the highway, getting all of the trucks and all of vehicles associated with this particular use on and off the highway, you know, out of the local roadway networks, you know, congesting the neighborhoods. That's what the whole idea is, to move it right next to the highway, so that, you know, in part of this operation, if it does go forward, is that you're going to direct all of your truck traffic to get on and off of that highway, and not come through town. So, you know, we're trying to lessen the congestion on 133 in the downtown area with, you know, heavy trucking.
Absolutely.
And just get it onto and off of 95.
Less impact on the town.
It's ten past ten. I'll accept the motion to continue the public hearing till January eighth? Eighth, January eighth, two thousand twenty. So moved by Bob Watts, seconded by-
Second.
By Joanne.
You gotta be kidding me.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Folks, just so you know, this is the initial public opening of the hearing. You will not be getting little letters in the mail anymore, if you're a butter or anything. You won't be reading it in the paper again. January eighth, two thousand twenty is the next time we will be dealing with this issue. Thank you, thank you very much. Nancy, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
It also suggests that, because they waited so long, this time that we flipped, because we have both public hearings coming back the same night, so they're for us.
Who should we have go first, you or you?
Happy night.
I leave that up to you.
We're not finished, we got not finished, guys. We're not finished. We're not finished by a long stretch. So, John, very quickly, we have an A&R or something here?
Uh, we do, we do.
And they would speak to the dispatcher or whatever, and they're still coming, picking up at five o'clock in the morning. And the code is, there's no pickup before six, I believe? I think it's six. I mean, five o'clock? And it's not, they can't say, okay, they want daylight, because it's still dark.
Yeah, I know.
It's at five.
Wide enough for two trucks to go by each other right now.
That's-
And you have track sales coming in?
That's ridiculous, five o'clock in the morning? And it's recycling, so it makes a lot of noise.
From the CrossFit gym? Yeah. I know, I totally agree. You can't barely get one truck to go around.
I know.
Why don't you come at midnight? Come two o'clock in the morning?
Sure, what the hell? We have never had interest in Georgetown. You're in Jersey. They're just automatically connected.
Yeah, well, it's part of your taxes. You pay so much more taxes. And they come get your leaves, right?
They come get anything.
At least widen the road.
Sure. To the curb, well, to the curb, and they would just take it.
If you have a refrigerator, put it out in the street. Sometime this week, the, the big truck comes and, it's gone.
Yeah. Holy moly. No, we never brought it, 'cause it was just, it was just too much of a pain in the- I don't want a towel with garbage in my car. So, I'm a city girl, I just-
I, I totally get it, I totally get it.
I remember as a kid, I think I remember them coming twice a week to do garbage pickup and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I called, 'cause we don't have much trash in our trash trash. We have like more recycling, so I called to see if I could just do recycling pickup, and I bring my trash, and I said, no.
The other way you can't.
Yeah, exactly. But I have more recycling than trash.
The only town I've ever been in that I didn't get trash from is like, that's another issue. You should not-
They're asking if we will get out of here before five.
Oh, we're gonna be out of here in twenty minutes. Let's rock and roll here. Folks, are we looking at an A&R now, John, if you will?
Yes, yep.
We have an A&R up here?
As reported in the staff report for this evening, this is another A&R plan. We, we've dealt with now two. This would be our third one, Pine Grove Avenue. So, if everybody wants to look behind you, or over that way, I'll describe real quickly what's going on. So the parent lot that's left of it, this lot right here, you see this one here? That was, that's a newly created A&R lot as of last spring.
I don't even see your mark.
This one here, this, I'm circling here.
I have to show you how to increase your mouth size.
Yes, that's right. I, I want it, you know, and hopefully we get a-
Trails, you need trails.
Yeah. So, what's left of the parent lot is this lot here, right? And this lot here. This is the lot twelve B, labeled twelve B, that the applicant is asking for this board to consider, again, as another A&R lot. It does meet the minimum frontage and the minimum lot size requirement. As everybody is aware, I hope, Pine Grove Avenue is a town-maintained road, it's not a paved road.
It's not maintained very well.
No. Well, it's not up to any type of-
So it's plowed?
Modern-day standard.
It's plowed, good way of putting it, Joanne.
Plowed.
It's not maintained greater than $500 per year.
And it's no wider than my driveway.
Yeah.
And it's in a mess. It's trees right up, crumbling up the asphalt or whatever was remaining of asphalt.
Yeah. Now, the issue, say the legal issue's involved, that there are existing houses. The town has issued building permits for many, many years along this, and most recently, this lot, the one that we did approve last spring, is being built on at this point.
No, the one across the street is.
Oh, the one across the street. So, this one hasn't been started yet. But that's been...
It's a humongous house. How big is that house across the street?
That isn't mine, that is somebody else. That's Michael Pro.
It must have about five bedrooms. It's huge.
All houses they've built today, except for tiny houses, that they try to sneak in behind houses.
But that street, is there any hydrants on it? Is there any drainage on it?
We just spent, excuse me, we just spent $50,000 putting a water man down Pine Grove Ave with a hydrant.
Cool.
Just for point of information.
You mean it didn't even have water?
They didn't even have water down there.
So, you had a well?
We had no, we didn't have any water.
Nothing.
So, we...
For the benefit of the viewing audience...
The record, could you folks introduce...
Yes, my name's Kevin Coniff, I am the applicant.
Okay.
And this is my partner, Michael Essie.
Take it away.
Hi, folks. There is one thing I'm looking at here, and keep in mind, this is a, this is an A&R. Evidently, this, if I'm reading it correctly, was presented with the town clerk, your application, November 7th. So, the 21-day clock runs, as you all know with an A&R, 21-day clock runs. So, we need to act upon this in some fashion tonight. I am noticing something a little bit disturbing. Is the owner of this, the owner, the owner of the parcel, of this lot 12...
Yep.
Is a Mary Hope Egan?
That's correct.
And why does she not authorize you to do this?
She has authorized me, why she didn't?
I'm looking at the section where it says owner's signature, and I'm not seeing it. I'm looking at your, the application that you brought to the town clerk, and it was stamped.
Okay.
This, it's not stamped, there's no signature there under owner's signature and authorization.
Okay, well, I have a purchase and sale with her, if that helps. I don't have it with me, but...
You haven't purchased the property yet?
No.
Oh, so she's, she still owns it, then?
Right now, I don't know that she's aware of this, at this point.
She's aware of it.
I'd love to take your word for it, you know, but I can't vote for this.
Can we act, can we act on something that an applicant doesn't know?
Certainly can, it's an A&R, you deny it.
I make a motion that we deny the A&R for, in the name of...
Oh, sorry.
Does she come up, is it?
This is something that's always confused me about, the whole A&R.
Don't go there tonight, bubba.
We endorse the A&R plan.
It's cut and dry.
What's not required? Approval.
It's, approval's not required. The subdivision, subdivision approval is not required.
You have to own the property and then come back?
Yeah, you guys can come back when you get it all squared away.
Well, all they need is a letter.
When you get it all squared away.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we need to file again. What's your motion, Tilly? Do you move to deny?
I move to endorse the A&R plan.
Denied.
Deny the A&R plan. Well, you can vote either way. Of lot map 6D, parcels 12 and 12B, number 8 and 10, Pine Grove Avenue.
So, your motion was to...
Denied.
Second that.
Seconded by Bruce. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. It's denied.
I understand.
We only have to do that because of the 21 days.
It's technical, yeah.
Technical, technical.
I understand.
And, John, if you write up a quick denial on it or something, just that, you know, the application was a failure to show that the applicant had...
I don't know how I missed that, but we were rushing to, obviously, to meet the deadline to get on this meeting.
Oh, okay.
Sat here through three hours of...
Appreciate it, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, wish you knew that earlier.
There is no other issue that we, that we have.
Not that I know of.
Just the John Hancock.
Yeah, gotta do it right.
Okay.
It's a legal issue.
Thank you.
It is a legal issue. 68 Tenny Street, request for minor modification.
Yeah.
Hey, everybody. Pretty good. How you doing?
John, you want to verify that for us?
Yeah, hopefully March or April.
What are we looking at?
So, real quickly, this gentleman represents Tank, which was given a special permit and site plan approval for their facility at 68 Tenny Street, as everybody will recall. Everybody... What was included on the site plan that never became an issue or discussed or talked about with this board was the actual curbing around the paved parking loading area. The plans showed slope granite curbing. Correct? It was sloped, right? And they didn't know about it.
Sloped or vertical?
It was sloped.
Slope vertical?
Yeah.
So, it was, it was an issue that wasn't even discussed as part of our review. What they'd like to have the board consider is to amend the site plan to allow them to replace the slope granite with a Cape Cod berm. That's that, if you're not familiar with it, it's bituminous, it's merged into the pavement surface to the extent possible. It has a slight slope to it. It controls drainage, you know. It's, it's less expensive, bituminous concrete is less expensive than slope granite curbing by a long mile.
Sure. $62,000.
That's the difference?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And the landlord has passed that cost on to us, and we just don't have it.
Yeah.
We're leaving everything but the granite, if it's okay with you guys. When the engineer, when our landlord's engineer drew up the plans, he thought he was drawing the plans up for a retail location, which we are not, we're a closed-door facility. So, there's nobody really visiting.
Just have to be a square.
Yeah, there's nobody really visiting there, so if, if we could realize that $62,000 savings would mean a whole lot to us, and we'd, we'd be leaving the concrete sidewalks and everything as is, just the granite.
They do, they do want to keep the $35,000 worth of trees that they have to plant.
Absolutely.
Because they do agree that the trees are called for. And if you go out there, Harry, and you probably drove by there, you actually do see that site pretty well once the leaves are off.
Oh, yeah, it's wide open right now.
Yeah, I drove by the other day, and I said, they were right.
Larry, quick question. Any difference in the stormwater calculations for that, when you transition from a, what did you say?
From the granite curbing to the Cape Cod berm?
Right.
Well, the Cape Cod berm is about 12 inches in width, has a reveal, which means the height of it about three inches, so that's, that's pretty much your slope. So, it's fairly gradual, it doesn't take too much to have an overflow. I don't recall the plans, but I think the berm is there to direct water to catch basins and so forth.
Yeah, it does.
It's not that much more expensive to do a type B berm, which, which will give you a six-inch, four to six-inch reveal, and it's a lot meatier.
Okay.
It'll, it'll do the drainage job better. You have to be careful when you're playing with both of them, because you can peel either one of them right off the, right off the map, so.
Okay.
I'd recommend the type B.
Type B?
Okay.
This is essentially an asphalt berm.
Yeah, they're both asphalt berms.
Right, right.
And, and you lay the, you lay the binder down, you put the berm on top of it, and then you, then you bring your top end to the berm. I can draw you the shape of what I'm talking about real quick.
Okay. But there'll be no net effect or difference to the stormwater?
There shouldn't be, no. I mean, if, if you've got, you know, the berm running around to control the stormwater and lead it to the catch basin, so. The Cape Cod berm looks like this, it's about 12 inches across the bottom with the three-inch reveal, so it's fairly flat. The type B has about an inch and a half here, it's about a 45-degree angle, and I believe this is an eight-inch base here. So, you've got a lot more meat there to, to hold the edge, and it's a little bit harder for a plow to take out.
What's your pleasure, folks? The first thing that we, I think we have to deal with is the idea that this would be a, a determination that this would be an insignificant change to the plan? That's the first thing you'd need to determine, if you wanted to deal with it tonight?
I see it as insignificant.
Is that a motion?
I move we consider this change an insignificant change to the plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, if I, if I'm hearing the motion correctly, the motion is made to consider changing the slope granite curbing to a type B bituminous concrete berm, and in the opinion of the planning board, this would be an insignificant change to the plan.
Correct.
Is that correct? Is that what the basis of it?
Yep.
Discussion, Tilly, did you, did you want something before we vote?
I don't think $62,000 is an insignificant thing.
I don't think it's insignificant either.
I didn't either.
When they found out about it, they thought the same thing.
I, I think that's terrible. I think that, I think the guy, the tenant?
I'm the tenant, yeah.
You're the tenant, but he's the owner. I think he's just shoving it off on you. If he showed up here, yeah, he's, he's drawing on our sympathy.
So, I...
I have to agree with you, $62,000 is not insignificant, but the...
The change.
The functionality of the design change, the difference, the difference is insignificant.
The design change.
Yeah.
The price, the cost, the cost of it is, I don't think what we're...
Yeah, we never really looked at cost anyway.
Yeah, if we were downtown, I wouldn't even be here, because I want to represent.
We usually don't care about cost at all. Yeah. Any other comments?
No, that's all, my thought is that...
Consider this to be...
You know, thank goodness Larry's here, that says that there's no difference.
Yeah.
So, is it, does it last just as long? Does, is it gonna be there, because the fellow, the owner wants to put it in another building, using this same parcel?
Granite curb outlasts bituminous curb, there's no question about it, but, you know, you take a good, a good hit on slope granite curb, and it's gonna need to be repaired. If you don't have good craftsmen putting it in, and they don't mortar it right, it's gonna fall apart, come apart, you know. I, I think you'll, I think the site will be served, and, you know, it's up to them to keep it, keep it up. A section gets knocked out, they gotta put it back in.
It's, it's easy to repair.
Yeah, it is, yeah. I'm gonna call, I'm gonna repeat the question. Consider or repeat it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Nay? Let the record show, that's four to one. This being a special permit, it should achieve the necessary votes to consider it to be insignificant change.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Awesome.
Do a great job.
We will.
Make it pretty out there. Good, no problem. Good. Little Hill subdivision, John, you wanna, you wanna break us in on that one?
Thank you, everybody.
You wanna give us a, sure, absolutely. Sorry, sorry for the brush, Little Hill subdivision. John, you wanna take that, or what do you wanna do?
Yeah.
Larry, thank you so much, man. We would have been dead without you tonight.
Fucking join our group.
And I'm pretty much dead right now.
I know, I mean, it's 10:30, guy.
I know. Two quick things, and then we'll be out, we'll be out, guys.
All right.
Okay, for this particular issue, Harry called me up last week and wanted to know if there were any outstanding issues remaining at Little's Hill. And there are outstanding issues, they pertain to the Conservation Commission. If you had a chance to read through the emails for this evening, there's a lot of OOCs that are outstanding. There's a lack of adequate as-built plan, in Steve Zesinski's opinion, so there are a number of outstanding issues, they all pertain to Conservation Commission. There is still money held, as surety for the completion of this subdivision, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Steve in depth, but it appears that he has talked to the owners, the previous owners of the subdivision, and that it appears that they don't have a problem with the remaining funds being used to close out.
I think I saw something like that in an email.
Right, that was from Steve.
Okay.
So, there seems to be progress going on with CONCOM relative to trying to close this out.
Yeah.
They're gonna need cooperation from the planning board.
Has to be a joint effort, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, and I need to put more, have more time to put into it, so we can cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, and get this under, underway.
This is a lot like what we had to do, if you recall, over at, what's that street? Off of your street.
Oh, Chaplain?
Chaplain Hills.
Yeah, we did that a little while ago.
Yeah, we did, we, we took the charity monies, and we, we finished the project and closed it all out, and this is the next one on the, on the agenda. I think we're just, John's just looking for authorization, and, you know, the green light here to begin looking into it.
To proceed.
And I do remember, that was over $100,000, this one's under $100,000. There was some...
I've been there for how long now, 15 years?
There's a ballpark figure that it's 36 to 40 somewhat thousand that we are holding.
Right.
So, we should be able to take care of these outstanding issues.
My, my only question at this point is, I don't remember the actual process and the mechanism of it. Because it was over $100,000 before that we had to do with Chaplain Hills, there were another, there were a series of steps we had to take, but this was, and I remember a distinct difference between over 100 and under 100, and how quickly and how easily you had access to that, those funds to do what you needed to do.
But this one, they didn't do the boundaries, as I recall.
Right, right.
That's the big one.
Yeah, there's about 30 missing boundaries.
Yeah, and some of those are boundaries between private property and town's open space.
The, the other variable involved with this is that the association still has issues that they would like resolved, and they would like to utilize the money, too, so this might become a party-type of thing.
Let's look at it, let's, let's begin, find out what the processes for using the money, John. I think that's a, call to Jonathan Eichman, or if not, an email, and we'll move on to the next.
Okay.
Thank you. Great. And, next one is new case law, RCA Development versus, versus zoning board of Brockton. John, this was just something that, this was a case law that came out, KMP did it, very important, I don't know if anybody got a chance to actually read it or not, it concerns A&Rs and the way things are done. Was hoping that if you got a chance to read it, you'd also thwart me in asking John to ask KMP for a, for a summary and some memorandum, yeah, for a, exactly what it, what it means and all, all, yeah, what it means to us.
Just terrific for us.
Yeah, give us a quick memo like that. Is that good? Everybody in agreement on that? My unanimous consent, John?
Yep.
Check with town council?
Just a, just a clarification, there's nothing to this. We're short on time, but it's not KMP anymore, it's just KP.
Wow, I stand corrected, whoa. I missed the memo.
I'm just telling you, I'm just...
Missed the memo, buddy.
They wanna be known as KP.
Wow, wow.
In other words, you were completely wrong.
They're changing letterhead, they're changing letterhead again.
No!
Wow.
You wanna stay up on that.
Not that.
You wanna be in the in-crowd, and the in-crowd is calling it KP.
KP.
Before long, you won't even know it, it means compliment KP.
I know, you won't even have to, it'll just be a...
KP.
Talk to KP.
Who was KP?
KP. East Main Street Recreational Park update, just to give you guys a quick update, the bid went out, came back, low bidder, it was like 312, Park and Rec awarded the, the bid, and contracts, my understanding is the contract went out to the low bidder, which was Desmond Construction, and waiting for signatures. I'd get a lot more in-depth, but...
That's good enough.
That's as good as you're getting. No.
From us?
No.
Signatures from us?
No, signatures on the contract, I'm sorry, signatures on the contract, nothing from us, no, just an update.
Yeah, and then the, the other part of it, you want the board to vote on the site inspection engineer?
Oh, you know, that might be a really good idea, thank you, John. Yeah, at some point, we're gonna have to, this is all gonna happen, and it's gonna roll quickly. What we should do is, we, we need to send out our field inspector for when the contractor mopes in and starts digging, we want our field inspector out there observing. Last time, it was done by Gail, but it was less than, less than what we were looking for.
They did the contract.
If you remember. Yes, they did the contract.
So, that's a conflict in itself, probably, is inspecting their own.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the other thing was, you know, they also wanted $11,000 to do it this time, and we may not have to spend that much money, depends, we'll have to see what's going on.
But the bids came out too, too high. Where are they getting the rest of the money?
No, actually, what happened was, the, the lowest bidder was 312, but they were missing one document, it was called a letter of intent. Gail Associates went back to the Attorney General's office and explained, asked, is that letter of intent absolutely necessary? The Attorney General came back with the opinion that that missing letter is something, the necessity of which could be waived by the Park and Rec, as long as it did not change the scope or the price of the project. And the Park and Rec made that determination, and they did that a while ago, and now it's a $312, $300, $312, $300, $312,000 and change, maybe $313, something like that. But the bottom line is, that is the amount of, less than the amount of money that is in the CPA account for East Main Street project. So they can award.
Well, that's, that's a good thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Rare thing.
Yeah. Hopefully, maybe we'll beat the snow, maybe, maybe the thing will open before next summer sometime, hopefully.
For our, our multimillion-dollar dog park.
Yeah, it takes a while, these things take a while. Last but not least, and then you can go home, guys. Planning Board appointment at the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. John, as you know, capital improvement planning is all the capital improvements in the town. They have a plan annually, that plan is reported to the FINCOM, and the FINCOM uses that for their planning, capital improvement planning strategies.